Good evening. It is 5:30 PM on Wednesday, June 5th, 2024, and this regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in the council chambers at 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Mayor Jeremy Grimm, presiding. Also present are Council President Deb Rule, Councillor Joe Espiro, Kyle Schreiber, Pam Duquette, and Rick Howard attending virtually. Under the city's adopted Code of Ethics and Civility as the Presiding Officer, I am to identify law enforcement personnel in the room who will be serving as Sergeant Barnes this evening. Tonight, we have Police Chief Corey Kuhn in the back. If everyone will please stand, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with righteous hands, one nation, undregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we proceed, I would like to make an announcement regarding public comment during our meetings. During COVID shut, the COVID shutdown and limited ability to meet and gather at that time, the city of Sandpoint began offering remote participation during public meetings. The record will reflect Councilman Dick has arrived. Sorry, Justin, for starting without you. Because those restrictions are no longer in place and because I would really like to encourage predominantly local participation in our city council meetings and proceedings, I want to welcome our Sandpoint citizens and others in our local community who wish to offer comments during the meeting to please attend in person. The city has gone to great trouble and expense to upgrade our council chambers and make it fully accessible and available to all who wish to attend our meetings. We will continue to offer the option to attend remotely, to watch and listen to our meetings live online, and we will continue to record our meetings and post those recordings online. However, with limited exceptions, we will no longer be accepting public comment from those attending remotely. Options offered to offer public comment include submitting written comments ahead of time by emailing cityclerk@sandpointidaho.gov or by attending our meetings in person, which our citizens always did not that many years ago prior to the option of remote attendance. So thank you for coming tonight, and please feel free to contact me if there's any further questions about that change. Again, we will be making accommodations for presenters who cannot join us in person, and we will continue to have the public forum here live in person.
Mr. Mayor, is there any discussion on that, or is that just?
No, as the Presiding Officer, you were not here at the last meeting.
I heard it, but you cut it off.
I did, and I'm not going to deal with that kind of stuff anymore. So we have a packed agenda this evening, including a public hearing, but we will take just a bit of time at the top of the meeting for some general announcements and reports, and we'll begin with a brief presentation on dark skies in a moment. First and foremost, though, I guess, is Eric here? Eric, I'm sorry, Kodiak Ellis? Yeah, Kodiak, oh, great. Kodiak's gonna be making a presentation for us. Kodiak, we do have a full agenda. Really appreciate you coming out tonight. You can come up, and do you know how to share your screen and provide that information? Excellent. And Kodiak, just before you begin, have you read 841 of our code about our night sky compliance? Awesome. Awesome. Good deal.
I think, and if I can interrupt for a minute?
Councilwoman Duquette?
Mr. Mayor, the reason I requested him to come is I don't think educate it, we are educated in the public about that code, and I know it isn't enforced. And I just thought it was really important, and since he's a young man that is interested in getting involved in the city, I think it's awesome. He's got a great presentation.
Excellent, Kodiak. Come on up, and just for the public and the council members, this was a request by Councilwoman Duquette to have Kodiak come and present to us. So looking forward to hearing what you have to say.
Hello, I'm Kodiak Ellis. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity, first of all. I'm here with two other dark sky advocates, my mother, Sue Ann Ellis, and James Fillmore. My mom helps me with everything I've done, including this, and James is working with the city of Coeur d'Alene on developing dark sky family lighting ordinances. I'd like to ask you all, how many of you love Sandpoint for its natural beauty? Yeah, pretty much everyone, myself included. That's why I'd like to put forth the suggestion of becoming a designated dark sky community. That's defined as a town, city, municipality, or other legally organized community, which has demonstrated exceptional dedication to the preservation of the night sky through the implementation and enforcement of a quality outdoor lighting ordinance, dark sky education, and citizens a part of dark skies. Dark sky communities excel in their efforts to promote responsible lighting and dark sky stewardship and set good examples to surrounding communities. Becoming a dark sky community would help to solidify Sandpoint's identity as a small city with amazing natural beauty. We've got our picturesque landscapes and pristine lake. They're some of the biggest attractions of the area, and ensuring that night skies are part of the mix will allow sightseeing and enjoyment of the natural world to continue after sundown, regardless of the season as well. To use a phrase from the National Park Service, "half the park is after dark." Becoming a dark sky community also has significant financial impact. The city of Tucson, Arizona, was able to save more than $2 million a year after implementing a plan to retrofit its lights and reduce their brightness in the early hours of the morning when less people are using them. An assessment done in Scotland reported that becoming a dark sky place had a 193% cost return rate from tourism alone. By the way, I said dark sky place, talking about Scotland. That is a more general term. Dark sky community is what we specifically can become.
Kodiak, could I interrupt you a minute? Could you pull your mic up a little bit, push it up? Can you guys all hear?
Okay, is this a little bit better for all you? Okay, good.
I apologize.
One of the biggest investments in becoming a dark sky? Sorry. The organization in charge of designating dark sky communities is Dark Sky International. They're a 501(c)(3) organization that was founded in Tucson, Arizona. Their mission is to preserve and protect the nighttime environment and our heritage of dark skies through quality outdoor lighting. Dark Sky is considered the world's leading authority on light pollution. They have over 193,000 supporters, members, and advocates worldwide across over 70 countries. Until 2022, they were the International Dark Sky Association, or IDA, which is why you'll see an ID branded slide later on. The first step for most places in becoming a dark sky community is creating an effective lighting ordinance. Luckily, we already have one of those, which is actually very good. That's Title VIII, Chapter IV. And as I said, it's really excellent. Ketchum, Idaho, which is central Idaho, is already a dark sky community, and their ordinance is really very similar to ours. The purpose is pretty much identical. The code that we already have in place can be used as a foundation to become known as the city with the darkest skies in the North Idaho area. The most important steps to making sure that lighting is dark sky friendly are directing lights to only shine where they're needed with a special emphasis on not shining upwards or into other people's property, and that is where our current ordinance really shines, pardon the pun. Also important is using lights only when and where necessary, lowering the brightness of lights, but not so far that they're ineffective, and using redder colors or lower temperatures of light. Sandpoint's commitment to being dark sky friendly shows that the city cares about its residents' health. Uncontrolled artificial light at night can be linked to cancer, diabetes, insomnia, a host of other maladies that goes well beyond what I've got listed here. Many of these problems can be mitigated by changing the temperature of light. For most of humanity's existence, we've lived with all of our light coming from either the blue sky during the day or red fires at night. That means that blue light has a much greater effect on our circadian rhythm than a red light does. Our circadian rhythm is how our bodies change over a 24-hour period, which includes sleeping habits, digestion, and hormone production, and more. Because of this, the American Medical Association recommends only using lights with a correlated color temperature of 3,000 K or below at night. Being dark sky friendly also shows that we care about our wildlife. Wild animals also have a circadian rhythm, just like humans, and they can suffer from a lot of similar problems as us if it is disrupted. Nocturnal animals are especially affected by light pollution. Too much artificial light at night can cause nocturnal animals to have activity at normal times, attraction to artificial lights, disorientation, and disruption to their mating habits. Nocturnal animals in the Pacific Northwest include bats, owls, coyotes, lots of insects, and more. In total, about 30% of vertebrates and 60% of invertebrates are nocturnal. 80% of migratory birds migrate at night. Many of them use the moon to navigate, which can result in them getting disoriented by bright sources of artificial light. This image. That's North Idaho somewhere around there. It shows GPS data of tracked migratory birds. As you can see, North Idaho is right in the middle of the Pacific Flyway. Birds that migrate at night over this area include robins, ospreys, and Canadian geese, and more. Lastly, being dark sky friendly shows our respect for our heritage. Humanity has had a connection with the night sky for its entire existence, which has had a major part in changing our society into what it is today. Native American, ancient Greek, Egyptian, and more have belief systems with very important places for the stars, which changed their societies, which in turn has changed ours. Ancient sailors would navigate the oceans using sextants and the North Star, and that includes those first sailors who came to America. The explorers who first came to Idaho also used the stars to navigate the unmapped west. Astronomy and space exploration have resulted in the creation of technologies that have changed the world. Cell phones, for example, might not exist today if those who came before us had not wished to touch the stars. And becoming a dark sky place is not an original idea in this area. It's been done several times. There are currently six other dark sky places in Idaho and northwestern Montana. Ketchum is currently the only dark sky community in the Pacific Northwest. It has just over a third of the population that Idaho has, and it produces about half as much radiance. Radiance is the amount of light at night as seen from space. The Central Idaho Dark Sky Reserve is a gold-tiered dark sky reserve, which means it has some of the darkest skies in the entire nation. City of Rocks National Reserve and State Park and Craters of the Moon National Monument are both in southern Idaho, pretty close to Twin Falls. And in Montana, there's Watertown Glacier International Peace Park and Lost Trail National Wildlife Refuge, which are fairly close to Kalispell. Sandpoint could join these dark sky places as the ideal choice for tourists that want conveniences that are unavailable in the more remote alternatives, such as proximity to Spokane Resort amenities like on Switzer and easy access to like Ponderay. That doesn't mean that we're going to lose our rural small-town feel, though. In fact, having natural dark skies will help preserve it. So how do we become a dark sky community? It's a three-phase process. Phase one is basically just talking to dark sky staff and starting the process. Phase two involves working with dark sky staff to make sure that the city meets the requirements to become a dark sky community. With the ordinance that is already in place in Sandpoint, we've already got a big part of this step done. Phase three is just the official review process to officially become a dark sky community. I've got a few graphs to show you. They measured the average radiance of a few places. As I said earlier, radiance is the amount of light at night as seen from space. It's measured in nanowatts per square centimeter. This graph shows Ketchum, which dark sky community in central Idaho. And you see its trend line, it's a red dash line down the middle, is very flat right on nine points. Here is Sandpoint. We have a bit of a slope, five points over the past 12 years. And we're currently at about 18, which is twice the radiance of Ketchum. And this is the area around Hayden and Coeur d'Alene. It's getting worse at about twice the rate at Sandpoint, 10 points over the past 12 years, and it's already much higher. This isn't even terrible. It's bad, but it's not terrible. Cities with hundreds of thousands or even millions of people can get above 100. For a more intuitive comparison of what is considered a dark sky, this is called the Bortles scale. As you see, Sandpoint is there around four or five. Even though it's right in the middle of the scale, that's actually quite good for a city. 80% of Americans can't see the Milky Way, which means they're seven or higher. It's time that Sandpoint takes the next logical step to solidify its commitment to valuing the health, heritage, and natural beauty here. The city has already done the majority of the work. It's announced the time to reap the rewards by becoming a certified dark sky community. I have some links to additional information if anyone's interested in looking at those. And that is all. Thank you.
Kodiak, thank you so much for your presentation and for your education. Does Council have any questions for Kodiak before we proceed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if we could get that presentation?
Can you share that with us, Kodiak?
Yeah.
Excellent. Maybe give it to Pam or to... Anytime, and we'll distribute it. Thank you again so much for bringing this to our attention, and we'll see if we can take some of those steps to move forward with the council's desires still.
Thank you for the opportunity to do so.
Use you as some help.
Next, I've issued a proclamation proclaiming June 7th as Support Local Gems Day, and I'd like to read it to you now. Whereas Idaho Senator Jim Rich, a member of the US Senate Small Business and Entrepreneurship Committee, continually works to support and promote small businesses in Idaho and the nation. Whereas in partnership with the Idaho Department of Commerce, Senator Rich launched Support Local Gems in the spring of 2020 as a way to encourage Idahoans to support small businesses during the early days of the pandemic. Whereas small businesses are the backbone of Idaho's economy, and now is in its fifth year, the Support Local Gems Initiative continues as a way to engage with Idaho's business community and celebrate the entrepreneurs and establishments that make Idaho special. And whereas the 2024 Support Local Gems Initiative, an all-day celebration of Idaho's small businesses, will take place Friday, June 7th. Therefore, I, Jeremy Grimm, Mayor of the City of Sandpoint, do hereby proclaim Friday, June 7th, 2024, as Support Local Gems Day, and I encourage all Sandpoint citizens to support our incredible local businesses. Dine in or takeout from your favorite restaurant, shop in person or online at a local retailer, purchase gift cards, write a positive review for your favorite local business, or just say thank you for all that our local businesses do to contribute to the economy and vibrancy of our community. Proclaim this fifth day of June 2024 in the city of Sandpoint, Bonner County, Idaho. Mayor Jeremy Grimm, I'd like to present this proclamation to Mickey Quinn, the new Executive Director of the Greater Sandpoint Chamber of Commerce. Mickey, if you please come forward. I also believe that Mark Kilmer is here from Senator Rich's office. And Mark, you're welcome to come forward to the podium and say a few words yourself if you'd like.
Thank you, Mayor, and councils. It truly is a great day on Friday, June 7th, to support our local businesses. They do so much for us, and having been a small business owner myself, it is a hard road to climb. But if we all do a little bit to show our appreciation for our local business owners, it'll go very far. So thank you.
And on behalf of Senator Rich in our office, thank you so much for doing this. Senator Rich is a big believer in supporting local small businesses, and we just encourage everybody to shop at the many great small businesses there in Sandpoint. So on Friday, so thanks so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you all. See you to take out there, and thank you so much for bringing this forward and all the support you provided. Thanks for all you do, and let us know if we can help you going forward. Thank you.
Next, just a couple of announcements that I have, and then we'll move on from the council. First, council is aware and for the public's becoming aware that through throughout the first five months of my term, I've been working on enforcement of various portions of our code. Like the dark sky chapter of our code, many of our laws here, our code, are not enforced. And as I'm going through this, this process, working with the police chief and our community resource officers, I just want the council to know that it's not a, just a stick. There's sort of the educational component to this. And every time I become aware of, you know, codes that are not being enforced or there's widespread violations, we work to, with the community resource officers, to educate the public and our residents and businesses on the code section before we come in and start taking enforcement action. So so far, we've worked on weeds. You may notice, North Boyer, many of the really appreciative of the residents who've, you know, trimmed their right-of-way weeds. We've worked on signs. There's a number of illegal signs placed in intersections or the feather flags, the pennant flags that are prohibited by our code. And we've also worked on some parking enforcement. So I just wanted to let the council know what I'm up to when you see correspondence from residents about, you know, engagement that we're having with them. Moving on, I just want to bring the council up to speed. Fire Chief Gavin Gilchrist, I've assigned him as our Bonner County Airport Advisory Board Member, so he'll be attending those meetings quarterly, sometimes monthly, depending on what's going on at the airport. And he's going to be our go-to person for all things related to activity at the airport, related to airport operations and issues and projects out there. We did have our mandatory tour for our wastewater treatment plant, my number-one priority. Yesterday, we were really lucky to have a number of teams from across the country and the region who came in to tour our plant. This is going to culminate in some interviews. I would like the council to reach out in the next week. If any of you would like to sit in on that interview process, it's going to be occurring shortly. I don't know the exact date. I apologize. I've also brought in former Public Works Director Cody Van Dyke, who will be sitting in on that interview team, and will be interviewing with Holly and Brandon and Cheryl and myself. So once these teams put together proposals, they are proposing for a preliminary engineering report that will be due by the end of the year, which is going to really give us insight and clarity on the process by which we rebuild this plant and the preferred technology used. For further information on that, we will then be submitting that preliminary engineering report and those costs to Idaho DEQ. They will be working with us to put us in their sifter in terms of funding availability, and we'll get moving forward on that whole process in the new year. So that's moving forward. A couple of other things, you might have seen the paper today. Sandpoint, we were awarded the Community Health Academy Grant. I'll be traveling down to Boise a couple of times this summer through the Blue Cross of Idaho Foundation. If I successfully complete the program, the city will be allocated $20,000 of grant to pair up and improve the health of our citizens. So wish me luck. It doesn't seem too hard, but I'm sure I'll learn a lot of great, great things about how people are improving health for their residents throughout the country. Finally, we're going to be doing one more comp plan workshop. Jason Welker is going to be collecting all comments from the council, and we're going to try to do that in one fell swoop and then bring the comp plan to public hearing. So just keep that on your radar. And finally, on June 20th, I had a meeting with Steve Gill from Idaho DEQ. Many of you know him. He's a lifelong Sandpoint multi-generational resident here, and we're lucky enough that he's head of the hazardous waste remediation work at Idaho DEQ. He and Mayor Geiger are going to be working on a program to clean up Black Rock, which is at the end of the Bay Trail, if you're not familiar with it. It's an old smelter site. There's some slag there of heavy metals, and I don't know all the chemical compositions, but they're going to be cleaning it up. And to do that, they're going to need access through the water plant to drive this equipment up the Bay Trail. So they're going to be coming June 20th to present to you, to us, on what that plan is and talk about their public engagement and the timing of that work. So just a heads up there. With that, are there any announcements from the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Council President.
Not as much in an announcement as it is a comment. I think I voiced my concern very briefly to you at the end of last meeting. But I feel like changing the opportunity for the public to comment on Zoom without council being more directly involved in the decision is somewhat inappropriate. These are the people that we are representing. There wasn't a meeting too long ago when a lovely mother and her two small children sat here most of the night. And I explained to her after that meeting, when she wanted to comment on the playground, that she could have stayed at home and made that comment through Zoom. I do understand that you're saying written comments can be turned in, but I think quite often when people are listening, what they are going to say may have changed. Even their opinion of what they were going to say may have changed. And if they sent in a written comment, then they can't change your mind there. But I was somewhat disappointed that there wasn't a little bit more in-depth conversation with council on this change before you went and made the executive change. As you say, it's your right to do so, but I feel like if we're really trying to be absolutely transparent with the public, I've sat here on the council the whole time, and just last meeting is only the second time we've ever had to turn the volume off on very inappropriate comments. I do understand the pros and the cons. I'm very aware of the benefits and the non-benefits to having that comment, but I just would request that in the future, there's some more in-depth discussion with your council. Thank you.
Duly noted, Council President Rule. Appreciate those comments and that perspective. I just would say that there is the opportunity for residents in our four-square-mile city to both attend and also arrange in advance if they have special needs to attend and comment via Zoom. So we are trying to be as accommodating. There are many cities, like the return-to-work thing, we're coming back from the COVID situation. You know, many employers are having people return to work. There are many cities in Idaho that have done this very same thing, brought public comment back to the forum, which is here. So I do appreciate that, and I hope I haven't offended you. But I just, I can't, I can't tolerate that kind of disturbance. I had a hard time paying attention to the rest of the meeting because those comments were disturbing and the fallout. So trying to run a meeting when you have comments that are totally inappropriate, it's disturbing to me trying to run the meeting. So I do appreciate that, and I'll, if the council is desiring it, happy to have you put this on the agenda for a full discussion in the future, and I'll entertain that.
Mr. Mayor, I think the council might appreciate that. I do appreciate what you're saying, but as being a representative of the public, that's part of our job. We put ourselves out here to be attacked in any way the public chooses, and it might not always feel good, and it's happened to me historically. But that's part of our job, and I believe I may have heard those words from you at some point in your lifetime, too, is that's what part of what we do is. And again, I'll just state that this isn't a constant happening at every meeting. It's been a very rare thing, only two times in, I don't know, 10, 12 years I've been up here, although we've only had Zoom for three or four years and the option. So thank you again.
Sure.
And thank you for sharing what I wasn't allowed to. I think you would have been allowed to, just at the wrong time.
Thank you, Council President Rule. Any announcements from the council? At this time, I'd yield the floor for some quick staff reports from the department. Who is excited to start? All right, Eric.
Good evening, councilors. Eric Bush here, construction manager, city forester. Just got a few updates for you, and I'll be brief because I know we have a long agenda tonight. But I've got some good news. At least I think it's good news. Last Tuesday, the Great Northern Grant was submitted. And if you're curious, the total dollar amounts are, we requested $23,896,000 out of this grant application. We, Sandpoint would be providing a 20% match, which is $5,974,000 for a total project request of $29,870,000. That was submitted last Tuesday, the 28th. We don't know when responses will be had yet. We expect around September, but they, FRA, Federal Railroad Administration, hasn't published anything. So I'll inform you all when I hear, when we might be able to expect responses on that. But right now, it's just kind of a wait-and-see. So pretty excited about that, that went in. We had some fantastic letters of support from Governor Little's office, Commerce Director Keeley's office, as well as from the offices of Senator Crepo, Senator Rich, and Congress- Keely's office, as well as from the offices of Senator Crepo, Senator Risch, and Congressman Fulcher. So very, very good to get that support from our, you know, local and state representatives, and I think that'll help our application substantially when they're reviewing it. The second item, we are underway on some design work for the downtown parking lot to rehab that parking lot, make it, you know, a little bit more aesthetically appealing than it currently is, make it a little bit more functional, and potentially evaluate some options for paid parking and controlled paid parking. That would be items that are, you know, require minimal staff time to manage. So we're just starting the process there. I expect that we'll have our engineer under contract in the next week or so with the idea that we will bid and make these improvements this fall. So that's what we're shooting for. We have Sura, I have presented to Sura, the Urban Renewal Agency, twice on this project. The second time was yesterday, and they're excited about it, and we're trying to build in, you know, as much as we can to improve the parking lot with a limited budget, but we're going to see how far we can stretch our dollar to improve the condition, also make it a welcoming, you know, you're a visitor coming to Sandpoint, you can enter a nice parking lot instead of one that's been beat up for a while. So just wanted to update you on that. It's pretty exciting. And finally, I think this one's really good news. We were awarded the Urban and Community Forestry Grant. I heard about that about two weeks ago. I haven't received formal paperwork yet because Idaho Department of Lands has lost some staff, so they're playing catch up. I have a call with them next week to get some of the info going, but that'll be coming pretty soon. So that's exciting, and I'm excited to get working with some of that grant money.
It's about a hundred thousand?
Hundred thousand was our request. Half of that was to update our tree inventory, and then the other remainder was for maintenance, code updates, tree plantings, tree removals, that sort of thing. So excited to make some impact with that money.
And before council may have questions for Eric, I just want to add the parking lot work that Eric described, that's funded by Urban Renewal, that's in their budget, and it's something that's been in that budget rolled over for over a decade. And I'm personally pretty excited. That's, that's like the welcome mat for our town, for a lot of people coming here, and hopefully there's enough money to regrade, repave, and present it in a more appropriate way for a community that's as great as ours with some wayfinding. Talked about a kiosk down there that provides information to the citizens of what's going on in the city and incorporating some art to the art fund down there as well. So the paid parking thing, that probably elicited some questions. I will absolutely be bringing any thoughts and concepts about that to the council for your discussion and direction, but it's something that I think we should at least look at in this design. So just wanted to update, any questions for Eric in the council?
Nice job, Eric.
Thank you. Thank you all.
All right. Brandon, City Engineer.
Brandon Stagland, Civil Engineer. Just wanted to give a private development update. We've got several utility main extensions that'll be happening very shortly. There's going to be at University Place Phase Four, which is the southernmost phase adjacent to the railroad tracks, they're going to be doing some water and sewer main extensions out of that to serve future development in that subdivision. There will also be at the Homestead Village Development off of the west side of Highway Two, off of Ridley Village Road that's been going on for several years. They will be installing water and sewer main extensions to serve those, that development very shortly. Also, on West Ontario, at the intersection of Ontario and Lincoln roughly, there's a small subdivision will be doing a sewer main extension that'll all be happening in the coming weeks. Also, I expect the, the Bonner County EMS building across the street from the County Administration Building on South Division to do their frontage improvements, sidewalk curb, and get that all finished up here. They're going to get started on that very shortly and be done late summer, early fall with that building, which will be great for, you know, it serves our community as the county EMS, giving them a good spot to be at. And then I also expect the Milltown Tribute Building to start very shortly this summer. That's two lots north of Super One off of North Boyer, so that's it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Brandon. Any questions for Brandon? Appreciate it, Brandon.
Good memories.
Holly, Construction Manager.
Hi, good evening. Project update for you, tomorrow our chip seal numbers go back, so we'll know whether or not we're going to be able to engage a contractor on our chip seal project, so fingers are crossed. Next week, we're going to put two projects out to bid. It's our street paving project on First Street, which you saw a couple of weeks ago. That will be solicited for bid and coming back to you in July for award. Similar, our water main project on Boyer Avenue this year is also going out to bid, so that will come back to you in July for award. In the last update I have for you, and the mayor covered it, we had our wastewater treatment plant tour for our preliminary engineering report to support a letter of interest application to DEQ later in January, trying to engage an engineering firm to help us out. We had seven firms in attendance, so we're really hopeful and hopefully we're going to get a good consultant on board to help us out.
Thanks, Holly.
Any questions for Holly? And we'll see you in a few minutes, Holly, on another item. Cheryl, Central Services Director.
Good evening. I have a few updates from the Central Services Department. I will start with City Clerk's Office and Special Events. Upcoming permitted special events in the next couple of weeks, we have the 2024 Canik and Nick Native Plant Society Plant Sale will take place at Lakeview Park on Saturday, June 8th, from 9:00 AM to noon. We also have the Chaff 150 Grand Fondo Bike Ride on Saturday, June 15th. That starts, it's a charity bike ride benefiting Lake Pend Ore School District. It is sponsored by the Sandpoint Rotary, and it starts and finishes at City Beach, and it's a four-mile out and back bike ride along Sand Creek Trail. You can get more information on the Chaff 150 Grand Fondo website for registering. Also, in City Clerk's Office, there has been a staff realignment. The Executive Assistant Position is now a Deputy City Clerk position. She had previously filled in as Deputy City Clerk for the, in the City Clerk's absence, and now she's just taking on more of that role, and she is going to be sitting up in the frontline. She will be taking over business licensing and alcohol licensing and permitting. She will also continue doing special events and will be the Deputy City Clerk filling in for Melissa in City Clerk's absence. In grants, contracts, and procurement, we are going to be applying for the 2024 Patrick Lee Hee Bulletproof Vest Grant next week, and that's going to be to purchase four vests for PD for the next fiscal year, which requires a 50% match requirement. We're going to be assisting the CPD Department in a grant application for the State Historic Preservation Grant through the Idaho State Historical Society for $2,500. This is a dollar-for-dollar match grant, and it's going to be used for the walking tour brochure development. And contract related, we are finishing up, and it has been sent out for signature, the Baldi License Agreement with Great Northern, and that's been a great collaboration between them and city staff getting this finalized, and it'll be great for the community. In IT world, IT pushes out phishing emails. Everybody gets them, you all get them, city staff gets them. We had a zero-click rate, which is a 100% of all city users did not click on the embedded link within these phishing emails that they push out, which is testimony to the success of the intense training that they have done for city staff. So bravo to the IT team for that. The industry rate is a 27.9% click rate, so to have 0% is pretty big. The SCADA project is moving along, and the contractor, they're very pleased, the utilities, the treatment plants, and IT project manager is making great progress. So very happy with that. We're still about a year out for completion, but at least the design is coming along, so, and we're still somewhat in line with the original budget, so that's always good news. And finally, the HR world. We have an assistant planner that is going to be starting June 15th. The city planner will be starting July 15th, and hopefully those dates don't change, but as of right now, those are the expected dates. There's a utility locator position where an offer letter is being sent out before the end of the week, so that position will get filled. The Public Works Director position profile is being finalized through the recruiter, and hopefully this will get posted very soon so that we can get that position filled. And the temporary building inspector position has been posted, and a few applications have been received. All park maintenance seasonal positions have been filled, and utilities seasonal positions are still in recruiting and have not yet been filled, but we're hopeful. And that is the Central Services Department update.
Thank you, Cheryl. I want to just acknowledge that, that phishing result, it is phishing attacks, you know, emails that look like real emails. My understanding is one of the, is the number one exposure area for cities and businesses in terms of people stealing information, passwords. It is astounding that we got 100%, a zero-click rate on these simulated attacks, and I just commend all city staff for being aware and paying attention to the sender and the links and everything that comes through. It is, it's really incredible that we got a perfect score. So please pass that along to Adam and Lance.
I sure will.
Any, any questions for Cheryl?
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Cheryl. Jason Welker, Community Planning and Development Director.
Good evening, councilors. Got updates from the multiple teams in the CPD Department for you tonight. Cheryl stole a little bit of my thunder when she announced that we have our two new city planners beginning within the next few weeks. Radica will be here in a week and a half, and Bill will be here in about six weeks, and we couldn't be more excited to have a full planning team on board here in a short period of time. We'll get into the Recreation Services Team update from our Rec Superintendent Katie, who's in her fifth week on the job. She wanted to share these updates with you all tonight. We did have our final track meet of the city track league on May 25th. Over 100 children ages kindergarten through sixth grade, including some of our kids participated in the track program this year, including my daughter. That was a really exciting city-run recreation program that wrapped up last month. We have summer recreation programs kicking off this week, including women's golf lessons, which is fully booked, beginner pickleball lessons, which is fully booked, and a new health and wellness program is rolling out this Saturday, and a booty movement yoga, it's not the booty you're thinking of, it's B U T I, I think that's a maybe a Hindi word. It's a booty movement and yoga will be at City Beach starting on, at 1:00 PM this Saturday. We've also got youth tennis leagues or tennis lessons, pardon, are fully booked for this summer, ages four and up, tiny tots lessons only has one spot left. The adult tennis lessons are a little bit slow with pickup, but we do have openings still in the adult tennis lessons that start in June, and this is a cool one. A lot of people don't know we have an outdoor shooting range at the city. It's up on Baldi Mountain Road. On Father's Day weekend is the NRA Daughter-Son Day at the Shooting Range. So if you want to bring your daughter or son up to the Shooting Range, there is a city organized event up there that day. The Shooting Range is actually part of our Recreation Department as well. Our Arts Culture Historic Preservation Team, we have several initiatives underway right now, the Paint the Plows Project. You've heard, you've heard us talk about the fun project that's getting local artists to paint the snowplow blades. They are fully primed, and now that the weather's looking better, they're planning to get back out and do some decorative art on the snowplows. We're fully aware it's not going to be a permanent thing, but while those plows sit around town all summer, it'll be, they'll basically be a mini mural until winter comes, and all that art is wiped out by snow, but that's how it goes. Heather was on the radio with Hannah from the History Museum last week, doing a history of lodging, boarding houses and hotels, and how and where visitors would stay throughout the long history of Sandpoint's tourist economy. So you can download that or listen to it on the K R F Y Radio Podcast, which is available on any podcast app. She'll be back on the air at the first Monday of next month as well. Okay, the ACHP team is doing a call for information on historic homes in the community. The intent is to be able to gather more information to celebrate rehabilitation efforts and put some of the selected homes into the walking tour brochure. One of the projects where we're going right now is updating the historic walking tour brochure that the city puts out. We're looking for some new historic homes to add to that. Another event in our rec department that ACHP is involved with is the walking tours led by historic storytellers. These begin on the Fourth Friday of June, and you can register online under Cultural Enhancement on the city's rec website. Finally, the city has nominated the Bellwood Building, which is the location of Fat Pig and the Pondre Winery, for an Orchid Award through the State Historic Preservation Office. This is a really exciting award, only given out to a handful of historic buildings in the state each year. So we're excited to partner with Julie Meyer, who owns the Bellwood Building, and Heather has taken the initiative to lead that effort with Historic Preservation Commission and a couple citizens, including former mayor Kerry Logan, who offered to actually write the application for that award. So we just submitted that award today, actually, that award application. So we look forward to hearing on whether that was awarded. Okay, we've got some parks updates. Items not on the agenda later tonight include what's going on at Travers Park. It's been quite excavation mess there for the last two weeks. That's because the storm drain from the James E. Russell Indoor Sports Center has been getting installed that runs out and ties into the city sewer on Pine Street, which explains why they had to dig a 10-foot deep trench out to Pine Street. We do expect, oh, that's also the storm system for the new skate park expansion as well. So that is a major storm infrastructure project that is expected to wrap up by next week. It was delayed, of course, in the two inches of rain we recently got. Once completed, we'll reopen parking in the, in the affected area and adjust the pedestrian access accordingly. Field sport users for the next week and a half are encouraged to use the Great Northern Parking Lot to the north of the sports complex and walk to whichever field they need to get to. It is definitely a little bit tricky in there while they continue with that storm drain installation. The skate park expansion, we had the, the groundbreaking ceremony on Friday. We had about 40 skaters and representatives of the Bonner County Skate Park Association came out, Dreamland Skate Parks was there. This was a really exciting event. The skate park's expanding, more than doubling in size by about 7,000 square feet north towards the tennis courts. This is a project 19 years in the making. We're super excited to be able to partner with BCSA, who has contributed around $52,000. And also just yesterday, we were notified that the city was awarded an Idaho Gem Grant from the Department of Commerce for 40, or sorry, for $50,000 to put towards that skate park expansion. So one of the additional add-ons we were hoping to do was lighting so that the skate park could be lit at night. We didn't have the money, the budget for that, but with that $50,000 grant, we fully expect to be able to do the lighting at the skate park as well, which will be really, really cool. The Travers Playground and Splash Pad, you're going to hear about that later. We've got the, the construction award for that contract. We're bringing that to you later tonight. And finally, in the trail world, Pondre Peddlers have been continuing work on the Lower Basin Trail improvements and new trails in Little Sand Creek watershed on city property, and we expect the next phase to open up this weekend. Maeve did conduct a trail inspection just this afternoon on the lower phase of one of those trails. Okay, we have a few visitors in the room tonight who we invited to be here, and some of those are the recipients, or sorry, the nominees for the committees and commissions that are on your consent calendar tonight. So we are really excited to be welcoming the appointees to the Parks and Rec Commission and the pedestrian bicycle, sorry, Parks and Rec Commission and Ped Bike Committee, Commissions and Committees, got to get those straight on tonight's agenda. We have nine in each of those, and I'd just like to quickly recognize those people. If you're here tonight, please just stand up really quick, and we will introduce you to council. So on the Parks and Rec Commission, we have Chris Anki, who is a city resident, Cynthia Rappel, David Miles, Eric Donenfeld, Gwen Victorson, Jessica Jansen, Josh DeLucci, Taylor Long, and Tyler Wagner. Those are going to be Those are going to be our nominees, assuming you approve those nominations tonight. Those will be the nine representatives on our Parks and Recreation Commission. So thank you to those nominees who put their names forward for that. On the pedestrian bicycle advisory committee, we have the following nine nominees. We have Kate Huesman, who many of you know, she's been on planning, she was on planning zoning for many years of the city. We have Aaron Billings, who I see here tonight, Evan Lewis, Jen Heller, Julie Pershinsky, Molly O'Reilly, who I saw in the audience tonight. And Radley Peterson, Taylor Prather and Reed Weber, who I think was here as well. So thank, oh, Radley, hi Radley. So thanks to all of those volunteers who stepped up to join committees, commissions. As you know, we have a staff representative, we have an administrative assistant assigned to do clerking. And the last thing we're going to need is, is you guys to step up and tell the mayor and myself which committee or commission you'd like to be involved in. Because one of the goals here is to get council representation on each of our new five commissions or committees. So we'll be talking about that very soon and hopefully the mayor will be telling me who would like to volunteer in what capacity there. Oh, finally, we are on committees and commissions. We are bringing the next round of appointments to the June twentieth meeting. We have reached the minimum threshold for the Americans with Disabilities Act Advisory Committee and the Sustainability Committee. So we do have recommend, I have given recommendations to the mayor for those two committees and we hope to appoint those at our next meeting. The one committee we are still not there for, it's actually commission, is the Urban Forestry Commission. So we're only at four applicants. We need a minimum of five to appoint that commission. So we are appealing to the council, to anybody here tonight. If you know anybody who's interested in volunteering on the Urban Forestry Commission, we still need at least one more applicant for that. So, okay.
Jason, can I just pause you there and express my sincere gratitude to you and your staff and the residents who have volunteered for these committees? These are, in my opinion, one of the most essential elements that make democracy work and the voice of the people be heard up here. And through the hard work of the council who's going to sort of preside over these and work with these committees. I just can't thank you enough and appreciate the hard work people are going to be putting in their willingness to step forward.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. And just one more thing than that. Now, once a committee or commission is, is appointed, the next step is for the staff representative, that's myself, for the pedestrian bicycle committee, commission, sorry, commission. Committee and Katie for the Parks and Rec Commission. What's the difference? A commission has a master plan that oversees a committee as an advisory committee. Commissions meet monthly, committees meet at minimum quarterly, possibly more often, just to clear that up. The staff representative will be reaching out to the nominees and coordinating meeting times and setting up a meeting, hopefully within the next month. We do want to get these going.
Is it too late to have applicants still?
For the four, we can probably squeeze somewhere in for ADA and sustainability. Yeah, but just another point, in our code, we explain that these appointments at the first appointment will be on one, two and three year rotating basis. Basis. So three of the nine are only going to serve for one year. They can reapply after one year. But there might be openings one year from now for the committees that we are appointing right now. And that's so that we don't have, you know, every two years, the same nine people are, are up for reappointment.
So if there's not nine people, are you still going to accept applications?
Yes, the sooner the better though, because we want to have those ready for you. You know, a week from now, we need, we need those ready for the following Wednesday. So if they can apply by the end of this week or early next week, we can still probably do that. Okay, comp plan, the mayor mentioned the comprehensive plan. I hope to get that to you guys by the first meeting in July for adoption. Thank you to those of you who got me your comments on Monday this week. I've been doing a lot of editing, have about seven pages of edits for the draft comp plan from back in December. Mister Mayor, I'm still waiting for your comments. Once I get those, we can go into a mini workshop here in a couple of weeks. Discuss all the proposed changes and then get that to the editor for final adoption and final implementation, which will of course require public hearing probably at the July third meeting. Okay, the final thing I want to talk about, I wasn't here two weeks ago, I was away on vacation. So I wasn't here to talk about the decision at the city to pause our lifeguard program. So I wanted to go into a little bit more detail about what's going on in our efforts to basically bring that program back to the city. As you know, last year we were faced with a situation where we only had five applicants for the lifeguard program. We actually offered the jobs to those five. When they found out that there were only five, four of them quit. Nobody wants to be a lifeguard on a team that's understaffed. It's not safe. So Katie, who is our rec superintendent, who has been in cities that have city lifeguard programs. Is has a lot of experience with this and she has said that we need around sixteen to fully staff our lifeguard program. So we said, well, what do we need in terms of budget for that? It's going to be about a hundred thousand dollars to fully staff a lifeguard program at the city. So what we're doing right now is we are rebuilding our rec department, basically. During COVID, we canceled about two thirds of our rec programs because of, well, COVID. And in the two years after that, our previous rec superintendent honestly didn't rebuild a lot of what was canceled during COVID. Katie, as you've heard, is a very ambitious rec superintendent. And all of these rec programs bring in money to our recreation fund. Our recreation fund is basically depleted after three years of minimal programming. So over this year, this summer alone, we expect to see our rec funds start to grow again. Once we have the James E Russell Indoor Sports Center online, that's another revenue source for the rec department. We're going to see that rec fund continue to grow. So what we're doing at the city right now is creating a plan to put the appropriate amount of money into the fiscal year twenty five budget for a lifeguard program. That can recruit and hire sixteen lifeguards. All that said, there's a lot of concern in the community about safety. I did just want to share a few facts about what's going on regionally with the lifeguard programs. Cordillane hasn't had a lifeguard program at their city beach since twenty sixteen. There has actually been reporting on the effects of that. And overall, the city feels like it's not necessary to bring it back. We want to bring ours back, but Cordillane has not had one for seven years now. Post Falls, it turns out, is recruiting lifeguards right now for their city beach. However, when you click on the job description, they're actually recruiting lifeguards to work at their supervised aquatics summer camp. Which is basically what we are doing this year. We are going to have a supervised aquatics based summer camp program. One of the programs Katie's building so that we can recruit and hire staff who will be getting paid out of the revenues generated from that camp program. If parents are desperate for supervised swim at City Beach, we are offering that this year. It's just not going to be free this year because we're down to very little in our rec fund. So the goal this year is to rebuild our rec program so that we can rebuild our rec fund. And put the money we need in the budget for twenty five so that we can begin rebuilding our lifeguard program over the winter. This is a big priority for the city. I know there's a lot of concern. We did learn last year that if you can't hire the minimum of twelve, ideally sixteen lifeguards, it's not safe and it's not fair. For the five or six kids who do sign up for that, to make them go sit there and bear all that responsibility. So you'll notice we are not tearing out the lifeguard stands. That's what cities do when they eliminate their lifeguard programs. That's what Cordillane did. We are leaving lifeguard stands there, but for this year, we will be putting no lifeguard on duty signs up and letting parents know that just like every other public beach on Lake Ponderay. They're going to be responsible for looking after their own kids while they swim. But it is really important to this team to rebuild that lifeguard program. But to do that, we need to get, we need to give Katie the chance, who's been here five weeks, I remind you, to rebuild our rec programs and rebuild that rec fund. So that we can budget appropriately accordingly to actually have a lifeguard program with sixteen qualified lifeguards. Okay, that's all my updates.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions for Planning Director or Community Planning Development Director Welker?
Mister Mayor.
Go ahead.
I just had one comment. I believe that our train station and the McDuff's rehab of the old post office both won orchid awards.
Orchid awards.
Yeah, so isn't that correct? Yeah.
I don't know, that's.
I know the train station did because Kerry went for that, but just thought the public might want to know that too, that they're very rare, but we seem to do really, really well with them.
Sandpoint has some truly special historic buildings for sure. Yeah.
And Councilon Royal, you're about to head out. I know you.
I am. I'm sorry. I have to leave the meeting this evening, so I apologize to you and the council members and the public, but I think you guys can handle it.
Thank you, Council President Welker. Any other questions for Jason from the council? All right, Police Chief. Thanks, Jason. Keep up the good work. Hi, Chief.
Mayor, council, really quick before we go on, the last two days I've spent in, in a workshop called SIMS. SIMS is sequential intercept mapping, which has to do with mental health. The question I have for the group is how many people have heard of the nine eight eight phone number? So by a raise a hand, I'm just curious. Nine and eight, if you've heard about it? Fantastic. So we're less than half and a strong in our poll. And I say that because nine, nine and eight launched in Idaho about a year and a half ago nationwide, a few years before that. In my meetings this week in the workshop, I was told that we've worked out the majority of the kinks to that. So I wanted to read just, excuse me, just a little bit of what it is. So nine and eight suicide and crisis lifeline, previously known as the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, offers twenty four seven call, text and chat access. To trained counselors who can help people experiencing suicide, substance abuse or other mental health crises or any other kind of emotional distress. Nine and eight lifeline is a direct connection to immediate support and resources for anyone in crisis. When someone calls nine and eight, they first hear a greeting, a message they get to choose who they speak with based off their circumstances. And then they're assigned to a trained counselor. A trained crisis counselor is important because it gives them the first lifeline that they may need for help. And they can be redirected locally or to, or for further assistance. So last two days we spent workshopping really how the city of Sandpoint helped on our county. How do we prevent those before they reach a crisis? What do we do with those when they get into a crisis? And unfortunately, in our circumstances, it usually involves some form of jail or adjudication. And then how do we get them through the process and then they help the need? We had a fantastic workshop with local representatives in that group everywhere from B G H was there. Panel, our health district was there, of course, the law enforcement judges, we had three judges attend. Prosecutors attended, public defender's office, a lot of other support groups attended. This was an absolute great workshop. The end of the meeting, we concluded that we needed to actually develop a team who would seriously address some of our concerns that we have. And it's a community that's going to resolve those issues a whole. So I volunteered members of our, of our city council to eventually sit on there. Once we understand which direction we're going. So here in the next few months, I'll reach out to see if anybody's wanting to, to be part of that, that panel to help us. Kind of direct our community in the, into the future for mental health. So that's kind of what, what we've done, what I've been doing. I know there's some questions about some parking, some other stuff. And so I, I think one of the questions that have come up recently is warnings versus citations versus like enforcement of like parking. For some of you, Deb left, I know Councilon Royals, one that probably historically understands a lot of it. Twenty two thousand eleven, the city of Sound, the city of Soundpoint voted to cut positions with the police department. Two of those positions we cut was our parking enforcement, two full-time officers. We ended up going through a period where we contracted out with Diamond Parking. You can remember that. That lasted four or five years. There was a lot of heavy handed enforcement taking place from the community's perspective. We went back, we redrafted some of our language, we changed some of the rules. We decided that we can manage it better. We brought it back in-house with our community resource officers, our crows, and now that's part of their task. We used to, having a conversation with the mayor, we used to, prior to twenty eleven, give out warnings. First time offenses for warnings, what we found, changing some of our rules, it become really problematic and tracking those warnings. And being effective in it, the council voted shortly after that to deal away with warnings and just go to just offenses. So if you get a parking ticket, it's a fifty dollar fine for your first offense in the downtown core. For those. Questions? There's a very quick overview.
Chief, I've, I've, and maybe the council has as well, I've received numerous concerns, complaints from visitors and residents about fifty bucks for the first parking ticket. Can you just walk through the appeal process? Is there an appeal process? Is it worth having one? Can they eventually come to council or I, I'm not up to speed on what that is?
Yeah, absolutely. So if you get, if you get a parking citation on that citation, there's a, there's an email and a process and how to appeal it. That appeal process comes back in inside the police departments reviewed by one of the sergeants. Then staffed with the captain. If someone doesn't like the answer from the captain, they appeal it to me, we review it. We haven't really had anybody go beyond me yet on an appeals. We've had a couple in the last five or six years that wanted to, but we've never had anybody push it. But there is an opportunity through the code that allows them to come in front of council and to present their case. Most of the time we can resolve those, those concerns in-house. I would say that not everybody that gets a ticket on an appeal, actually, we, we do dismiss them. I mean, there is legitimate reasons for why things happen. And so I couldn't give you the numbers, but there is a, we're not that heavy handed where we don't dismiss some of those citations. So the process does work, in my opinion.
And as a follow-up, the warning, it sounded like the warning process was problematic because it's tracking and licenses and who got a warning. Is it your first thing? Have any of those barriers been addressed? And is it possible, in your opinion, to reinstitute a, a warning for the first ticket?
No, it still becomes problematic and time consuming to, to do it. If, if the council voted to and wanted to go back down that path, just with the understanding of how much time it takes to log the warning, put the warning into a system. When you're out doing it to then find the violation, you check it for the two hours, you go back, you got to look it up in a system. You got to find out when the violation was. And so it does add a lot of staff time with our crows, especially when they're not only doing parking enforcement, they're doing code enforcement on top of that. And they're doing animal control on top of it. And so the, the three staff is quite busy doing those.
Thank you, Chief. That, that answers my questions. Council, have any questions for Chief Kuhn?
I, I have a question. What are the infractions? What kind of parking violations are you finding that are predominant?
They're, they're really not an infraction, but that's okay. It's just a fine. And I say that just because of statutorily how it's classified, but so the fines, so like downtown, it could be a two hour timeframe.
Because there's signs that say two hours.
Yeah, so if you're in a two hour, they'll walk the two hour timeframes. Honestly, the, we probably do it two to three times a day instead of like six times a day, which you could do. So there's definitely, if you're parked in the two hour zone, you probably get a solid three plus hours. Red zones, curbs, sidewalks, handicap zones are probably some of our bigger offenders in that downtown. Yeah, so timeframe is a big one, parking, we get, we get a lot of people that park in no parking zones. You'll see now town, downtown has been repainted. So you'll see the, the white islands with the slash marks, people park in there. We get people that park on crosswalks. We'll get people to park in the handicaps zones. We get people to park on the grass. I know I'm preaching the current some of this. For some reason, our visitors are, and even some of our locals are entitled to park wherever they feel like it. And so they'll park on curbs, grass, sidewalks with an expectation that they, they can do that. They can until they get caught, I guess.
Yeah, Chief, Pam, if you don't mind, what is the progression in the tickets real quickly?
So the first, the first sign is fifty dollars, the second fine is a hundred dollars and the third fine is a hundred and fifty.
And if people don't pay them, I assume our prosecutor gets involved or?
We send them to collections. So it's not, it's not a criminal act, it's not infraction. So if someone doesn't pay for it, eventually what will happen is they'll get, they'll go to collections if they don't pay from there. We do have a booting process. We boot maybe four or five cars a year. And I'm probably on the, once we started the booting program, we had several people that refused to pay their fines. We did boot for the first year when we started that program. Four or five people started quickly paying their fines. Now they get noticed. If you don't pay your fines, you're going to get booted. We work with them for payment plans and other options. And so it's been successful in collecting some of those past due fees.
And there's not a separate fine for a motorcycle violation versus a vehicle or violation?
Thanks.
Any other questions for Chief Kuhn? Thanks for your department report that you sent out.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. And if you guys got any questions on the department report, feel free to ask. If there's something different you want to see, just let me know.
Thanks, Chief. Who's left? We got Sarah and Chief Gilchrist. Chief, is it appropriate to introduce you as the Sandpoint? No, not yet. Okay.
I'm getting to that. I have it all written up.
All right.
I'm just kidding. Yeah, we're one step closer, right? How's everybody doing tonight? Glad to see you guys. I just want to give a quick update. On July the first, we will officially become Sandpoint Fire Department. There have been a lot of moving parts over the last couple of months, just preparing for that date. With the majority of this, those major hurdles are kind of already behind us. Just think it's a good time to bring you guys up to speed on exactly where we're at. As far as personnel goes, as of this past Monday on June the second, all of our Sandpoint crew members are now assigned to the Sandpoint Station. Silkirk members have been assigned out to the Segal and the West Side areas. We'll continue to do some staffing, intermittent staffing throughout the end of the month. We have some folks, possibly some shift trades left and a few overtime positions left to fill. But as of this Monday, the sliding back and forth of personnel ended, so we don't do that anymore. Your nine crew members of, are for the Sandpoint Fire Department are the captains are going to be Kevin Amorbieta, Zach Yukich and Tenille. uh, Zach Yucich, and Tenille Tassant. Uh, our engineers are going to be Troy Badeau and Allo Pucci, we do have one opening in the engineer rank. Uh, firefighters, uh, right now are Stephen Omott, Connor Nelson, Carson Nicholas, and Sol and Janae Wolf. Uh, we'll be holding a competitive exam to fill that engineer's position, probably in about roughly sixty days. We're gonna notice it this week and then sixty days we'll have that. Uh, as far as our equipment goes, uh, loose equipment, PPE, which that, uh, we are in the final stages of the agency allocation, getting all that stuff divided out where it's supposed to be. Um, we're still on target for the end of the month, but we're thinking it may be a little bit sooner to have all that stuff done. Um, then we're gonna can go through and conduct a full inventory of our stuff so that we make sure we're tracking it. Um, let's see, we also have, uh, in the process of getting under rescue tools, a new set of Jaws of Life, or, you know, the PO process is almost finished, and we should be ordering that stuff really soon. Um, hopefully next week. On the administrative side, uh, right now, we're just kind of going through finishing up our budgeting process. Uh, we're addressing some of our internal processes that, um, things like purchasing, um, that were geared more towards a um a shared or a JPA format, getting those redirected into a single agency format, working with AP and finance upstairs, getting that stuff taken to get, uh, taken care of. Um, labor negotiations, we're in the middle, I wouldn't say the middle of that, I'd say we're on the end of that. Uh, both the, uh, the local firefighter union and our team here at the city have been working really hard, getting the labor negotiations uh, to a point where we feel like they're just about wrapped up. Uh, we made a lot of progress, we're on the wages portion now, and if you've ever been through that, that's always the big one, it's always saved for the end. So that's where we're at right now, currently, and I think we meet, we met this morning, I think we meet again next Monday or Tuesday, so. Um, another big thing that we're taking questions on right now is the department branding. A lot of trucks are riding around, don't have any insignia on them, so people wondered if we went out and bought a bunch of new trucks, that's not true. Trucks cost way too money, and Sarah likes to say no way too much for us to be able to do that. Um, but we have pretty much finished up our proofs on that, so I'm hoping by the time we get here next, uh, next month, we'll have, uh, all that stuff taken care of as well as the uniform, um, the uniform insignia is changing that stuff up. Uh, we'll be standing up, um, after, I mean, we did have a meeting, a department-wide meeting on Monday, uh, and one of the things that came out of that meeting that I thought was, uh, that was kind of pressing was the fact that we needed, we're gonna go ahead and stand up our, uh, department Facebook page, uh, social media, and then start preparing a press release for that first of July, get it out a little bit ahead of time, just so people are aware. Um, be taking care of that over the next few weeks. Uh, and the automatic aid agreement is, uh, finally made it to the agenda, and it would kind of beat that one to death, but um, it's on there. Um, I'll be around if you guys have any questions. Uh, but after we sign that tonight, if it's approved, then it'll go to Northside and all four agencies would have signed the automatic aid agreement. Uh, lastly, I say lastly, but my last thing I'd like to do before I, uh, take any questions, if you have them, I'd like to give out some thank yous, um, just as we've kind of gone through this. First, I'd like to thank our firefighters for being flexible during this, uh, dynamic period, um, in their careers, they've kind of done one before, but, uh, they've really taken on the responsibilities and tasks without being asked, they've shown a lot of initiative. Um, also, I'd like to thank, um, our city staff, uh, some I interact with more than others, but, uh, to whom um, have been really supportive and gone above and beyond, um, what I would consider their, you know, their realm. They've gone out of their way, uh, to make this transition as smooth as possible, they work very hard at what they do. Um, just knowing that they're there, willing to stop in the middle of what they're doing, or their task is to answer a question, or just to see if they can help, uh, kind of paints a clear picture of what our city team, how, what, what they define as teamwork, um, they're, they're in it to win it for sure. Uh, lastly, uh, on behalf of what is going to be the new Sandpoint Fire Department, I look forward to working with Mayor and Council um, in, in our vision of creating a safer Sandpoint. And that's all I have, unless you guys have any questions.
Thanks, Chief, um, I, I just, uh, I really appreciate all the hard work, I know this has been a big push and, uh, probably none of us saw it coming, uh, in, in November, so, uh, thank you for all the hard work and to everyone else. I, I have a question related, that we had some communications as part of, I'm working on enforcement of parking, specifically in cul-de-sacs. Um, uh, we had some public concern, including my brother-in-law, who got a notice about no parking in the cul-de-sacs. Can you just speak to, uh, the importance of clear cul-de-sacs in terms of deployment and responding to an incident, um, in a cul-de-sac? Is that something, I, I know it's IFC, but can you, can you speak to is the importance of that?
Yeah, it just has, it has to do with fire department access, um, is why it's in the IFC. Um, they very clearly lay out, uh, in the IFC, in the fire code, uh, for international fire code, for those of you that don't know that, uh, that deal. But it lays it out very clear, and it has to do not just with cul-de-sacs, but it's with all fire department access. It, it gives, um, street widths and, you know, if there's a height, like a normal street's twenty feet, but if there's a height, it needs to be twenty-six feet enough for pullouts. Talks about hammerheads being able to turn around, things like that. Um, so if it's in the fire code, I mean, we've adopted the fire code, it is the, uh, State of Idaho is still the twenty-eighteen edition, but it clearly calls it out in that twenty-eighteen edition. Um, the city of Sandpoint has adopted the fire code, and in the state, State of Idaho, with the exception of a couple of, I would call them gimmies, um, but with it, with the exception of a couple of the rules and, uh, that are in those codes, um, that, it is not only the minimum acceptable, it is also the maximum, you can't go above it. We couldn't go out and say we're going to mandate that everybody have residential fire sprinklers. I would love to do that, that's, that would be awesome, but we can't do it. Um, but, you know, in a world of not only is it the maximum, but it's a minimum, I'm, I'm hard-pressed to really ever be an advocate to do less than what is acceptable, so.
And just a quick follow-up, uh, Chief, when you arrive, it's not just the truck arriving in the cul-de-sac, you put out hoses, sometimes you have like pads, like, do you have those arms on the machine, on the apparatus, uh, the feet?
Stabilizers.
Yeah, so I mean, it's a bigger area than just the truck. And then, um, just a, you, am I hearing you right, you'd fully support us enforcing no parking in these cul-de-sacs?
Oh, sure, yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions for, uh, the Chief?
I would like to know when we get to meet the fire personnel.
Um, I am going to see if we can have them here at the, uh, on the July meeting, it's kind of tough right now, people are kind of in and out, and, you know, it's starting to be summertime, so people are, they're getting ready, we had rain, and my garden loves rain, but it also loves sunshine, and people are starting to kind of take off, but we're hoping that, uh, so, at some point in July, we'd like to get them all in here and just
Good luck, thanks.
Face, face, sure, but you guys are more than welcome anytime to stop by the station.
Thanks, Chief.
Yep.
Keep up the good work.
Absolutely, good, thanks.
Uh, Sarah, uh, it's Lynn's our finance director.
Good evening, I wanted to quickly go through the budget process, and then we have several new council members that have not gone through this yet with the city, so I wanted to just do a quick, um, kind of what the process is and where we're at, and what you guys can expect as well. Um, in, um, March is normally when we start the budget process, right after we deliver the financials from the year before, we jump right into budget. Uh, first thing we do is we meet with all the, um, people who are gonna be entering the budget, doing the budget, or involved with the budget, um, from the city side of it. Um, the supervisors and, um, managers work with their directors, um, during the next month, and they, um, come up with their operating and maintenance budgets. Um, and then from there, after those are all entered, um, then we also, then they come to, um, typically come to me and I'll look at them, um, go through them with either the mayor, um, um, and all the department heads of, um, of what the, what they're requesting and what they have in the budget. We also then at the same time are working on our CIP or Construction in Progress, um, capital plan that we have. We started doing that about the same time, but it's kind of, it's overlaid a little bit differently because it is big, big dollars that are requested in those. So then we are also doing a employee position review and a market analysis for COLAS at the same time, that's usually done in, um, in April and May. Um, and then that is all wrapped up into, or that's all evaluated and then, um, added into the budget to kind of see where our bottom line ends up at that point. Then we also are doing fees at the same time, we, um, have a large fee schedule. Um, if you haven't seen it yet, it is probably close to twenty pages of all the different fees that we charge, and, um, that's also being looked at, analyzed, and, um, um, at the same time, because that normally then, um, as that's wrapping up in, um, we typically, um, be what we call drop the budget, or we present that budget to council in the second meeting in July. And fees normally at the same time, we, we, um, present them at the same time as well. At that first meeting, um, of budget, typically all the council is doing is adopting the maximum amount of the budget by state law. So, um, what we do is we adopt it by state law at the max, and we can always go down from there. So that very first, um, meeting is, is really just a, here's, here's the max, um, we don't really make any decisions at that time, it's just, besides, you guys just adopting the maximum. Um, we have several different budget reviews, um, meetings that kind of in, in between that and the next final, um, meeting in August, um, where we meet, we go through things, we have presentations, this year looked a little different, probably have department heads come in and actually do presentations and talk about their areas, what they have in their budgets and stuff. Um, as well as go through, um, uh, in the past years, we've kind of had two separate meetings, one where just the, um, construction, the big CIP projects, um, and then one for the operations and management part of the budget. I see that going similar this year as well. Um, you, we use ClearGov as our, as our, um, budgeting software that we use, and that will be similar this year, we'll be using the same software. So when that budget comes out, it, um, basically is all online, and it, um, goes through, and each department has their own, what we call their, um, narratives that they have, that goes through what that, um, area does, and then the numbers along with it, so. Anyways, right now, we're wrapping up, um, I'm gonna be meeting with the mayor next week, actually, on that part of that side of the budget. So we'll also be probably meeting with you guys as well, um, to go through any, um, any, I guess, questions you have, um, if you need to, um, if you want to schedule any one-on-ones too, so I can show you um, details, go through the ClearGov, um, feel free to reach out, um, there's a lot in there, so.
Yeah, and, uh, I will be reaching out to council members to meet with them individually to understand if there are, uh, pet projects or essential areas of focus that you would like, um, us to try to accommodate in the budget, and, uh, we'll try to make everyone happy if, if we can, there's limited dollars. I, I also just, it's a good point, uh, I wanted to point this out to council in case you see these around town. Um, because of the funding timeline, I get a lot of calls about our roads. So for instance, we have several road projects that are funded from last year's budget that are going forward. Um, this is just a sign I'm putting on our, our road projects that we have funded, that we're actually doing. It just lets folks know that this, this street is going to be repaired, it's in the budget, uh, the project's moving forward. There's a QR code where they can click on it and, and go right to that ClearGov page, track the progress, and, uh, here you go, Rick. Uh, but anyways, we got a, we're only doing three, three big projects on streets this year, so, um, there'll, there'll be a couple of those signs on, uh, Fur, Cedar, and I believe, uh, Fourth between, uh, Superior and and South, so, um, you'll see those around town, just wanted to use that as a tool to let people know the budget happens, and then the project happens, but we're gonna work on stuff, so.
They're gonna be laminated?
They're, they're metal signs, yeah, reusable, recyclable.
Brain.
Uh, any questions for Sarah? Sarah, thank you so much, this is a ton of work, she spends countless hours preparing our budget, and we'll bring you a balanced budget and go from there. Thanks, Sarah. I think that's it for department reports, excellent. Scream if I missed anyone, I don't think I did. Okay, uh, next on the agenda is the public forum portion of the meeting, which allows the public to address the council and myself regarding items listed on the consent calendar on any topic not included in the agenda. If anyone wishes to speak now during the public forum or during any other portion of the meeting, you must complete a comment signup form and hand it to staff to accommodate those who wish to speak on general items during the public forum, as well as those who wish to speak on specific business items on our agenda. A total of twenty minutes will be dedicated to public forum at the beginning of the meeting. If you'd like to speak and did not have an opportunity to do so, we will provide that opportunity by reopening the public forum at the end of our regular agenda. I'd like to make everyone aware that the city does have a policy on public meeting decorum, the rules are posted here in the chambers at the entrance doors. In summary, I would ask those participating in our meetings this evening, please be pleasant and respectful, not make derogatory statements about others, including city staff, not be boisterous and disruptive, no calling out, clapping, or holding up signs, et cetera. Please note that council cannot take testimony on any planning-related items or matters outside of an official public hearing, which we have one tonight. Um, public comment need not, need to be kept to comments only, please no questions or debate. You're always welcome to contact me during regular business hours if you have questions or concerns during the public forum, and also during other public comment opportunities during the meeting, each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak. When it's your turn, please state your name and whether you reside in the same city of Sandpoint. Uh, Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak during our public forum?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Amelia Boyd.
Good evening, Amelia.
Good evening, um, I just wanted to piggyback on what Deb said, um, earlier about restricting vent, uh, people, Zoom people from commenting. Um, you said, Mr. Mayor, twenty, thirty, twenty-eight minutes ago, that the voice of the people should be heard. Um, so I just find it kind of interesting that now we're going to silence those voices on Zoom. Um, I remember four of you, plus myself, um, when we were campaigning about getting the voice out of our, of our citizens, so it's rather disappointing that you had decided to go that route. Um, whereas Deb is right, she is the, you all are the voice of the people, so I encourage you, because this is your meeting, you have two of you to request an item to be on the agenda and make it a vote and an action item, whereas you all would decide and not just one person. So, um, I encourage you all to do that, because it's disappointing to hear that those people will not be able to participate.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Boyd, and just for clarification, um, there is the opportunity to speak on Zoom pre-arranged by contacting the city clerk. And, um, this is a four-square-mile area, it's not like Bonner County, where people have to drive hours to attend a meeting. Um, we will make reasonable accommodation of people who need to speak on Zoom, this is strictly to prevent, um, outside, um, comments that are inappropriate in any, any, uh, situation, so, thank you. Is there anyone else, uh, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Janine Shepherd.
Mayor, council members, just wanted to come and pray for you guys tonight, um, there's a couple other things on my heart that we're gonna pray for tonight, so I'd love it if you'd join me. Um, Lord, we lift this meeting to you, and we ask that you would be present tonight in all that the mayor and council members do, help their words be pleasing, and that they would be a light that draws people to Jesus. We ask that you give each one wisdom as you work in and through them tonight. Lord, I have some groups in our community that are on my heart tonight, first. Lord, I ask for a special blessing on the senior citizens of our community. All ages are vital, Lord, but the seniors carry such wisdom that we all need. Help us to recognize their importance in our lives and honor them. This city was built by many of these men and women, and we know many suffer from loneliness, so we pray, Lord, that you would not only be present with them, but send people who can be Jesus with skin on to spend time with them. We thank you for the senior citizens. And Lord, I also want to lift up the people within our community that struggle with mental health, specifically suicidal thoughts. We ask that you would fill them in ways that cause them to know of your great love for them. We command the spirit of suicide to leave in Jesus' name, and we ask that you help bring them what they need exactly when they need it to save lives, Lord. This is a huge problem, especially with our young people. They feel that they are without hope, but you, Lord, are our hope. Show yourself to them in ways that are undeniable. You are a good, good Father, and we thank you for your hand upon us, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thanks, Janine.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that is all who have indicated a wish to speak during public forum.
Thank you, and that will conclude the public forum portion of this evening's meeting. We'll now proceed with the consent calendar, for the record, the total amount of bills is one million, four hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-five cents, reflecting six hundred thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and thirty-three cents for regatable payables, and eight hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty-two cents for payroll. Does council have any questions, or are there any items on the council wishes to remove from the consent calendar? I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Uh, moved by Espiro, second by Dick, this will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Spuro?
Yes.
Counselor Rule? Counselor Rule?
Absent.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This is a first for three of us up here. Next on the agenda is a public hearing and decision on city application PS 24-0001 from Bonner County seeking preliminary approval to subdivide approximately 59 acres at 4001 and 4203 North Boyer Road. I will now recite the order of procedure for the public hearing. Staff explanation of the subject of the public hearing. Presentation by the applicant or their representative. Any questions should be directed to the applicant at that time. Opening of the public hearing, at which time the public may provide testimony. Those who wish to testify are required to complete a signup sheet. If the council wishes to ask questions of the person testifying, those questions need to be posted before, posed before the person returns to their seat. The order of those who wish to speak will be as follows: those in favor, those neutral, those opposed. Rebuttal testimony from the applicant or their representative will follow. Final questions may be asked of the applicant at that time. However, if new facts are elicited, the public will be given an opportunity to comment on any new facts. The public hearing will then be closed for deliberation. No new information may be provided after the hearing is closed and questions may be directed only to city staff during deliberation. For the record, any written comments received or included in the meeting packet or otherwise provided to council, if received in time to do so. Before we proceed, I will ask for confirmation from each counselor. Please that you have no conflict of interest and have had no ex parte contact regarding this matter. Councilman, let's start on left. Schreiber? Any ex parte or conflict?
No.
Councilwoman Duquette?
None.
None.
Dick?
None.
I do want to disclose that I did work for a property owner west of this application. I have no existing financial impact or conflict with making a decision on this application. And I'm not conflicted. Just wanted to make that recognized.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead. You forgot one? Yeah.
Oh, Councilman Howard, sorry.
No conflicts.
And no ex parte?
No.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry for missing you. You're right here on my my screen. All right. I will now yield the floor to interim city planning planner Darren Fluke, who's joining us remotely for an explanation of the subject on the preceding public hearing. Thanks, Darren. Can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Perfectly.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Again, my name is Darren Fluke. I'm your interim city planner. Tonight I'll be walking you through a very brief presentation on a small subdivision that has been proposed in in your city. Tonight you're hearing PS 24-0001, which is a application from Bonner County to approve a preliminary plat to create three lots out of two existing platted lots. And I will show you where that is in just a second here, which is the property that's bordered by North Boyer Road to the east Samuelson Avenue to the west and Boyer Farm subdivision to the south. I'm sure you're all familiar with the county fairgrounds. This plating is a condition of approval of a rezone application that came ahead of it. The plat looks like this, and I was intending to show you another screen here, which is maybe a little bit better resolution. Is that, you probably can't see that. Okay, Zoom is tricky for me. On this drawing, north would be to your left over here and south would be to your right. This is Boyer Road on the top of the drawing and this is Samuelson Avenue here on the bottom of the drawing. Basically, the original lot lines are being adjusted and combined to create the three lots that you see here. One lot here, a second lot here, and a third lot, the larger lot containing the fairgrounds is there. All lots that you're seeing comply with the minimum minimums prescribed by the zoning districts. These are the zones that were approved through that rezoning action that has a development agreement requiring this replating. So M U R for the existing county facility building and then the the fairgrounds here on the larger lot would be Zoned RR1. All lots have frontage and access as required by the code. And it should be noted that we will be taking an additional dedication of right of way off Boyer Road so that that road can be built to its ultimate section prescribed by by your code. Just to mix things up for you here, we switched orientations. So north is at the top of this drawing. You're seeing the existing county fairgrounds facility, public safety facility down here. And this is a little portion of the the larger fairgrounds lot that has been adjusted into that property. This plat does have, does not require any additional public infrastructure to be installed. And the extension of Samuelson Avenue to city standards will occur through the action of another property owner that is abutting this property. And that is subject to a recorded agreement that the city has with that landowner. I should have mentioned as well that Brendan Stagland, I hope stayed in the room tonight to address any more detailed questions that you might have. Just a point of order, I did come to this application a little bit late and so maybe some of the nuances may be lost on me. But I would say that from the standpoint of the zoning and subdivision ordinances, this is fairly straightforward application and there's really no issues here with compliance with your zoning or subdivision ordinances. And the staff is recommending that the council do approve this application. I'm sure you've all been through the staff report, so I'm not going to read this. We have very minimal conditions of approval. Just to ensure technical compliance with the provisions of the code. And I think with that, I can stand for any questions that the council may have. And if necessary, Brandon can back me up with more detailed questions that you might have.
Thank you. Thank you, Darren. Does council have any questions for staff at this time?
No.
Darren, just one maybe to help the public and anyone who's not familiar. One of the reasons we we require plating when when folks come in for rezones. Can, I mean, can you just briefly explain the benefit of platted versus unplatted property in the city and why we strive to get all property in the city platted?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Plating is just a a method of subdividing the land such that all parties know exactly how much land is involved and that all the land involved with within the subdivision meets the city minimum standards for utility availability as well as you know, public safety and other standards that the city may have. And so plating really just came out of, you know, a couple hundred years ago when the land rush of the the West happened. And there were many unethical actors selling parcels that didn't contain the amount of land that they said they had. So at its most basic, plats ensure that when you buy a piece of property that you are getting exactly the amount of property that the seller says you are getting. And it's on the public record that it exists in that way.
Thanks, Darren. And I just also include that all the utilities and related encumbrances are included on the plat, so you can look at this and know that there's a transmission line easement or a utility easement and other things. So it really helps visualize and quantify exactly what the lay of the land is. So thanks, Darren. I just thought that'd be helpful for some people to understand. If there's no questions from the council at this time, I will now yield the floor and the podium to the applicant. Ms. Brandon, do you have anything to add?
I just wanted to add that although this is referred to as a subdivision, a lot of people think of it as creating lots. There were three lots here before that were what we call unplatted. And one of the boundary lines moved between those, but we didn't create three lots. There are already three lots. We or the county decided to adjust the boundaries between those three lots. So and yeah, so I just wanted to point that out. We're not actually creating anything new.
Thank you, Brandon. I would now yield the floor and call to the podium the applicant or their representative for any presentation remarks they'd like to provide. For the record, please state your name and who you are representing pertinent to this application. Chairman Amet.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Lou Comett, Bonner County Commissioner, Sandpoint City resident. I'm here to ask for your approval, which is moving towards the final stage in regards to the rezone of these three different properties. This has been an interesting journey, but what this does is it really prepares Bonner County in preparation for the future. And an example of that is the Ren Fair is taking place at the Bonner County Fairgrounds this weekend. These events have grown and the fairgrounds needs the parking. The expansion of the Samuelson Avenue is going to result in a loss of approximately two acres. These rezones will provide that flexibility, and this is just the final stage. I don't have a lot to add in addition to Mr. Fluke's presentation. But the county did engage a parking study. And this rezone will provide the Bonner County Fairgrounds that capacity as well as keeping all of the property within the control of Bonner County. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but we look forward to this task being completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Amet. Does council have any questions for the applicant?
I watched the planning and zoning meeting to figure out what was going on. And I do remember as a resident, was it last year, when you came and did the whole move, so I kind of understand it amazingly enough.
Thank you, Mr. Amet or Chairman Amet. Appreciate your presentation and we will now prepare to proceed with the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
As we said earlier, our first call on those who wish to testify in support of this application, then those who are neutral, and finally those who are opposed. Again, if you wish to testify, you will need to complete a signup form available at the table by the front door and hand it to staff. Please indicate on the form whether you're in favor, neutral, or opposed. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. City policy provides that the presiding officer may allow time to be gifted during a public hearing. I will allow for that option this evening. If you wish to gift your time to someone else, you may do so. Person gifting their time may do so only once. And the person receiving gifted time may receive only one gift, or a total time of up to six minutes. If you are gifted time, please state as much when you begin your speaking at the podium and indicate the name of the person who gifted you their time. The public hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, have any members of the public signed up to speak in support of this application?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. And I would like to ask, please, Josh Smith, are you interested in testify in support as neutral or in opposition? Mr. Mayor, Josh Smith.
Hello, Mr. Smith.
Hi, I just, I'm here representing the landowners that are sitting to the west of that property there. We are just kind of held up by that extending the Samuelson Road there to develop that piece of property over there. So we're here just to ask that you approve this and move it forward so we can move forward. That's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Smith?
Okay, I guess I do have a question. Extending Samuelson Road to the north?
Well, because it's just, it's just a dirt road right now.
I just went down it today.
Yeah.
Good road.
Yeah. No, it's a good road.
Samper.
So that we can develop it into a
You're gonna make it wider?
Yeah.
Okay.
And conform to what?
So from the terminus of Samuel's right now, north
Right.
to the city boundaries.
And there's dirt roads.
That's just woods, tiny little dirt road. Yeah, we're just going to turn it into a regular road continuing Samuelson.
Through that dirt road?
Yes.
Okay. Is it being widened? Samuelson Road, because it said something like putting a multi-use. Is that not part of this?
Well, we we can, that's, Mr. Smith isn't the property owner.
Okay.
I think staff can answer that for you, Mr. Smith.
Okay.
And explain the details of of what's happening here for Councilwoman Duquette.
Anyway, we'd like to bring that road into the city so that we can move forward with our property over there as well.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other questions for Mr. Smith related to his testimony? Thank you, Mr. Smith. Just to help clarify there, Councilwoman Duquette, so that plat on the west side of it dedicates a 70-foot right of way, which would allow the Mr. Smith's who he represents and his family to then build that road so they have frontage on that property to the west. Without that, that property is unfortunately stranded with no access.
Mr. Mayor, can I provide some background on that? Just briefly, the background is in, we we entered into an agreement, the city entered into an agreement with the county in 2008 that they would dedicate this right of way to us as long as the city was responsible for constructing the improvements for the unfinished portion of North Samuelson. We separately entered into an agreement with this developer that Mr. Smith is representing at the very north end of our city boundary that they, as a condition of their building permit on that lot, that they would construct those right of way improvements. As far as like what the corridor looks like, it's going to be an exact extension is what I plan on having them do of what Samuelson is now adjacent to those existing apartments. So there's a 10-foot multi-use path on the west side and a six-foot standard sidewalk on the east side and two-way traffic and room for parking on both sides of the street.
Thank you, Brandon. Madam Clerk, is there anyone else who wishes to testify in favor?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Clerk, is any member of the public signed up to speak who is neutral?
No.
And in opposition?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Are there any members of the public who haven't had the opportunity to speak and wish to do so? This will be your last opportunity before the public hearings closed. Does the applicant wish to offer any rebuttal testimony to any of the comments? I assume not. This will be the applicant's final opportunity to speak before the public hearings close.
We're good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Does council have any final questions of the applicant before the public hearings closed? Council will now deliberate. The the public hearing is now closed. The council will now deliberate and may ask questions to city staff. Sample motions have been provided on the dais for you. With that, if there are no questions from council to city staff?
Like to make a motion.
Go ahead, Councilman Espiro.
Motion that Sandpoint City Council, after consideration of the criteria and relevant standard of Idaho code and Sandpoint City code, approve city application number PS 24-00 01, Bonner County's request for preliminary plat approval of the three lot subdivision of three parcels, RPS 3835001001AA. Approval of tree lot, I just read that, RPS 00000036601A and RPS 38350010020A totaling 5.911 acres bounded by North Boyer Road to the east Samuelson Avenue to the west and private property to north and south. Legally described as Bonner County readiness, center block one, lots two and one and two, and unplatted portion of section three, township 57 north, range two west, Boise Meridian, Bonner County, Idaho. Subject to the following conditions: one, the final plat signature sheet will be updated to ensure the name of the signatory and is printed under the signature line. Two, the final plat shall address the comments of the independent highway district to which the reference to the previous agreement amendment regarding extension of Samuelson Avenue and the instrument number 79226 shall be removed. Needed correction to the right of way width of North Boyer Road will be made. The 20-foot utility easement shall be shown centered on the existing 10-inch water main that straddles lots one and three of the plat. The city of Sandpoint will be added to the plat headings based on evidence, records, and testimony. The reason for recommending approval with conditions are as follows. One, city staff has followed the notice procedures applicable to subdivisions contained in Sandpoint City Code Title IX, Chapter IX. Two, based on the information presented at the hearing and the placement of limitations through conditions and the application is completed with the city code Title X subdivisions and Title IX zoning. Three, the proposed subdivision is consistent with the city's overall planning goals and objectives.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Duquette. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
We will now move on to old business and proposed resolution seeking approval of an agreement with Gino Construction of Idaho Incorporated for construction of the inclusive playground and splash pad at Travis Park. This proposed agreement follows council direction on May 1st, 2024 for staff to solicit bids for this project. I will now yield the floor to Community Planning and Development Director Jason Welker.
All right. I've got three items for you all tonight. We're going to start with
All right. I've got three items for you all tonight. We're gonna start with, let me show my screen really quick. Hey, we're gonna start with the no, let's get this thing out of the way. Sorry. Listen, get this collapse that so I can actually see the screen. Get this out of the way. All right, guys, this is just a moment.
Play some trivia while we're waiting. Does anyone know the date of the first jet airplane that crashed in Sandpoint? Not on the airport?
The first. Guessing there was multiple.
I believe this is, there could have been more.
In the future.
December tenth nineteen fifty-three, Sandpoint rocked by Sabre Jet crash Wednesday morning. This crashed in the McCarling pole yard and sent reverb all across the city. It was a very violent and catastrophic crash that killed the pilot, but he luckily missed the school.
Okay, thanks for that.
Yeah, moment of trivia.
Interesting trivia. All right, our first agenda item from CPD tonight is for the request to award agreement A twenty-four fifty-three hundred dash six to Gino Construction for the Travis Park Playground and Splash Pad Construction Project. We went out to bid for this after, I believe, our first meeting in May, maybe the last meeting in April. We had three qualified bids submitted. You can see the bid amounts we received here. We opened these about a week and a half ago. Everything from a hundred and, or sorry, one point five million down to the winning bid from Gino at eight hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. We were excited to continue working with Gino on this project. They've been excellent partners on the James E. Russell Indoor Sports Center. They are onsite, which is, means that they are familiar with the location. They are by far a very qualified bidder for this project. And we are recommending that City Council considers awarding this agreement to Gino Construction. Construction is set to begin basically in concert with the continued work on the indoor sports center. We are approaching completion of the interior for that building in the next few weeks and exterior work will begin shortly after, including landscaping. And of course, the playground integrates seamlessly with the landscaping for the James E. Russell Building. So that's what we're here to ask for tonight is the award of the contract for the playground and splash pad to Gino. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Council members have any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman Trevor.
Yeah, could you give us a rundown of the budget for this project?
Sure. So the, actually, I've got that right here for you. This is the, can you, you can't see that because I fiddled with Zoom. Let me just read some of the budget highlights for you. So the original Parks Capital Improvement Fund allocation for this project was five hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars. That was matched with the LWCF grant land water conservation fund of the same amount. So that gave us a total project budget of one point one two, two million dollars. We have encumbered at this point, I'm sorry, I messed with this spreadsheet earlier. So encumbered prior to tonight, meaning money that was already allocated, we had three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. So if you add the eight hundred and eighty-one thousand to three hundred and twenty-eight, twenty-eight, you will notice that this project is already over budget, and I think that's what you're getting at. So we are about eighty-six thousand dollars over budget on this project, but you recall at a meeting four or five weeks ago, we did talk about the capital, Parks Pack Capital Improvement Fund budget for this year, which included around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of projects that we are not doing this year. So what we are essentially doing is reallocating the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in projects, and those were for things like a design concept for a non-motorized boat launch, a design concept for a dog park, the resurfacing of the southernmost tennis courts at Travis Park. That is a project that will be on a future parks budget, but with the amount of work going on at Travis Park this year with new, four new tennis courts going in the James E. Russell Building, we determined that fully funding the parks, or sorry, the playground improvement, the skate park were higher priorities this year than resurfacing additional tennis courts. So what we've essentially done is taken the two hundred and fifty thousand that would have gone towards tennis court resurfacing and designing a future dog park somewhere and said, these are the projects we need to do right this year. So that freed up about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we moved into contingency for the two Travis Park projects, not including the James E. Russell Building. The James E. Russell Building is fully being funded out of the seven point five million dollar donation plus interest earnings on that. So we haven't reallocated any CIP capital improvement funds for the Russell Building, but we are at, at a point, not surprisingly, there's always unknowns, there's always change orders at a point where we are hoping to reallocate the two hundred and fifty thousand that won't be spent this year from our Parks Capital Improvement Fund to do the two projects that we've planned for years and do them as good as possible as well as possible. So that is the answer to your question, I believe. If you, if you have other questions, let me know.
Go ahead. No, you are on.
Go ahead, Kyle.
So of that budget, sorry, you ran through it pretty quickly. How much of that is contingency funding?
There's none.
There's none.
Correct. Is that a good thing? No. Should there be contingency funds? Yes. But this, these projects were budgeted under a prior administration, and for whatever reason, in our parks department, there wasn't excellent budget practices being followed. So we ended up with no contingency funds. The, the other challenge is we're also facing the reality of construction costs today. That the expectation was that the construction phase of this project would have come in below eight hundred thousand dollars, and we would have been within budget. Construction costs, when this project started two years ago, it never would have cost eight hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. We visited rec, parks facilities in Minnesota a few weeks ago when we were hosted by Legacy Building Solutions. And we found out that tennis centers similar to the James E. Russell Sports Center were built three years ago at half the price, half the cost that we're facing today. And there are, of course, unique regional differences between the Midwest and northern Idaho, but a big part of that is just inflation in the construction industry. So I, I think what, I think the intention was for there to be a, a good ten percent contingency when this project was budgeted over a year ago, year and a half ago. But the reality is when our bids came in, this was what we got, and we are required to go at the lowest bid and yeah, it's just reality.
Councilman Schreber, I'll, I'll just add as an aside that in the budgeting process, any future projects that will come forward under my administration will have a healthy contingency in them.
And I, I think given the, you know, inflation we've seen, that the standard practice of, of budgeting five percent, six percent contingency, I think that needs to be more like ten or twelve percent these days. Because the construction industry particularly has seen higher inflation than other sectors. So as we look into twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six in the, in the parks budgeting process, you can rest assured that if, if we're, if we estimate a project to cost two hundred thousand, we're probably gonna budget more like two hundred and fifty thousand for it. Just expecting, and, and you know, this is not something we're happy about having to, you know, go to council with change orders every two weeks. But given the constraints we're facing, the scarcity we face with these projects, that's kind of the situation we're in.
Did you have further questions, Councilman?
Yeah, so if I'm remembering this correctly, the last time we had a change order for the Russell Building, we said if we needed it, we have this eighty-five thousand in the parks fund.
It's actually two hundred and fifty thousand, but we do not need that for the Russell Building. And we are actually, things are going really well on that project right now. We are, I think, the, the known unknowns we've overcome, the excavation work that we saw drive up the cost by sixty thousand dollars. That's, that's all been taken care of at this point. So yeah, we're, and even with that said, we still have around three and a half million dollars earning interest every month. We're still earning about twenty thousand dollars in interest. So we're actually continuing to see that project, the, the funding continues to roll in for that project as we pay more invoices, the interest payments are gonna decrease, but we, we do expect to come in within the original donation and interests to cover the cost of that project. And there's no request here to allocate CIP funds towards the indoor sports center.
And you mentioned the excavation, so this obviously is directly next to the building that needed excavation. Obviously, the building has a lot more weight than a playground does, but with underground hydraulic pumps, high pressure pumps, you know, heaving and settling of, of soil could certainly cause problems. Has that contingency been built into this contract that if they find, say, feet of sawdust that additionally needs to be excavated, are we gonna see a change order?
That's another reason we're excited to go with Gino. They know the property better than anyone. They've been on site for over a year now. So they're more familiar than any of the other potential contractors with the conditions in the ground at Travis Park. So if, my understanding is that this eight hundred and eighty-one thousand dollar contract is taking into account all the contingencies they, they expect to face, or they think could possibly be faced based on their year of experience working on that site. So it's, it's quite possible that the final cost of this project comes in. This is the max, maximum amount it can be. So it's, it's quite possible and hopeful that we can actually achieve the original budget of one point two two million without having to expend the full eight hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. So if you're asking, are there potential unknowns? Sure.
I just read the part of the contract that said, that talked about subservice. And it didn't specifically call out what we found right next door, and so that was why I was asking if that was discussed with this.
So right next door, the, the pad for the indoor sports center, they had to excavate down five feet for that. When they came across century-old sawdust, they ended up having to excavate down eight feet. There's nothing like that level of excavation required for the playground. The site is already pretty much prepared. There will be some grading of the current site, but they're not excavating down like they had to for the, for the sports center.
So if I recall the, the meeting where we took, where we approved the plans for this park, we're not storing any water onsite. It's just use once and then run off?
It's a gray water, the, the splash pad, I believe, and I don't, I'm not an engineer, I'm not the landscape architect, but I believe it has a recirculating system that stores some of the water and
Okay, and that's gonna be stored underground?
Yes, and I don't, like I said, I'm not the engineer, so I'm not sure what that particular storage vessel looks like.
Okay.
It's gonna be stored and used to water.
Oh, that's right. Yeah.
The plantings around, so we're not just flushing it down or treating it every constantly.
Okay, yeah, I couldn't remember which one we landed on for that.
Yeah, yeah, it's
I think that was your idea.
Yeah, it was, it was a savings and it also has an environmental benefit, so.
Sure.
No, I, Councilman Schreber, I, I appreciate your questions. I just want to say, you know, you and I didn't choose the location of this, this, these improvements, and I think you understand we're trying to just get this across the finish line and celebrate what's to come on this. I, I would agree with Director Welker. There could be other unknowns. Who knows? It's, you know, we all know what that site is. I, I pray that there's no unknowns. But we do have, by borrowing from or reallocating these capital improvement dollars from the dog park, from the tennis resurfaring, we do have more cushion if, if we need to, and we're hopeful that we're not gonna have to tap into that, but.
Yeah, I can tell you from
You'll be the first to know if we do.
From my perspective, I mean, the, the less of those funds we need to put towards the skate park or the playground, the better, because we have other exciting projects we want to do in the future in parks, and if we spend that money now, it won't be in our budget for, for next year. So it's not like we're going out there looking for ways to, you know, sink money into the ground at Travis Park.
I'm frankly kind of surprised Gino even bid after how hard you guys have been beating them up, but.
Gino, I mean, I'll, I'll tell you what. Gino's an amazing partner in this project and Maeve has a fantastic relationship with their whole team. And I think they really respect Maeve as a project manager and want to keep working with us, honestly.
Mr. Mayor, I have comments.
Sure. Questions?
Questions. Okay, questions. When I spoke with you yesterday, I had these same questions, and we saw that this is coming. The money we have left does not match the bid. And at one point, I believe we were asked to hurry to order some equipment because of cost rising. These are just some issues I'm having with this. Yesterday, how do I make this a question? When I asked you, what other projects are we taking money from? You said there weren't any. I, I heard there weren't any. And yet now there's the dog park that's been on the docket for quite a few years. And kayak loading is something that interests a lot of us. I think, I'm afraid that you have designed beyond funds with this, and I don't think it's fiscally responsible. And I'm wondering because we talked, you and I, about the Terrell, the money, all the money that's been spent already that brings us down to the eight hundred and forty-six thousand to pay for this, and yet we've got a bid at eight hundred and eighty-one thousand. And I wasn't aware that there was two hundred and fifty thousand that was being thought of for this. We stated, I, I have a real issue with what we say is gonna happen, and I know there are things, I don't even care about the ground right now. It's the whole thing.
Councilwoman Duquette, is there a question? This is questions for the council members.
Okay, my question is, what do we do when we have designed beyond funds? And can we take something out? Can we put it back up for bid?
Councilwoman Duquette, is there something you'd like to take out of the playground?
Yeah, the splash pad, I think, is expensive. And I voiced my opinion on that before. I'm just thinking that and maybe that is put off for a time so that we can be fiscally responsible. And so how do I make that question? Can we figure out a way to be fiscally responsible with this?
Councilwoman Duquette, those, those questions are more appropriate for me. I made the decision to not move forward with the dog park design. I made the decision to not move forward with the boat launch design and in consulting with staff to reallocate these tennis court resurfacing dollars. The situation that we're in is we've spent both us new folks collectively in the city, years working on a design for a project that's been presented to the public. We are trying to get this across the finish line. Making changes, as you suggested, deductions and other things, major ones. One, don't fulfill the vision that we presented to the public. So just like in a household, when you have a unexpected contingency need, you look in the budget and where can you scrape in the budget to find funds? It was my decision not to fund a design for a dog park. I think we can do that in-house. Look at the one in Ponderay. So twenty-five thousand dollars, for example. I didn't think that was appropriate to spend on the design for a dog park. It could be better allocated towards this project, which we're trying to get across the finish line. I'd really appreciate your support to help this thing
We also said, excuse me, but we also told the public that we were matching this grant, city matched this fund to encompass the whole thing.
Correct. And this was a budget that had nothing to do with you, myself, and some of, some of the staff that did, did not have an appropriate contingency based on the soil and site conditions and inflationary environment that we find ourselves in. So we are trying our best to deliver the project.
I think the playground is an awesome idea, an awesome plan. It just doesn't seem to me fiscally responsible the way it's being done.
So
I won't ask any
If, for example, we could, if, for example, we took out some play features, we eliminated a third of the playground, let's say, or got rid of the splash pad, we would end up with a, a playground, that's not what we promised the community, that is not as good as it could be for the kids, and we'd have an additional three hundred thousand in our budget that we haven't spent this year. And that's not fiscally responsible because that is our taxpayers' money. That is the money that we promised to spend on capital projects in our parks. If we let that money carry over, then we've not fulfilled the vision we promised, and we've not spent all the money that we had. The mayor's right. The, the previous administration had allocated sixty thousand dollars for designs, not to actually build a dog park, but to hire an outside consulting firm to come in here and do public engagement and create more fuzzy watercolors of conceptual renderings that would probably cost us another two million dollars to implement. The vision for our department at this point is to use this talent, the skill that we have on our team. Maeve is a certified landscape architect and one of the preeminent park designers in the country, and use her to do the dog park design, use her to do the non-motorized boat launch concept. Because when we're done with Travis Park this year, nine and a half million dollars of capital improvements to Travis Park, sadly for the city, we don't have nine million dollars next year. We're closer to the three sadly for the city, we don't have nine million dollars next year. We're closer to the three hundred thousand dollar range for actual capital improvement projects. So what is our amazing talented parks planner going to do? She we're going to use her to actually plan some of these parks that the previous administration had anticipated hiring. You know, putting an RFP out, hiring a Seattle consulting firm to come here, pay them tens of thousands of dollars to create a document of a future dog park that we probably would never be able to afford. So fiscal response fiscal responsibility also means giving the taxpayers their money back in the forms of public goods, and that's what we're doing in this park. So.
Thank you, Council, Director Welker. I know you love a spirited debate. I I don't know that we need to.
Not debating either. I'm done.
Okay, well, thank you. I hope everyone appreciates the 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 purpose here is to ask questions related to the item that is up before us, which is the award to Gino Construction for an eight hundred eighty one thousand dollar bid to complete this park.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask just one more question? I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but we did find a lot of savings in the Russell Building and did a great job of value engineering. Has that same process been done here? Is there anywhere we can squeeze some money out? I know we've already purchased all the equipment, and so obviously, we're not going to like leave equipment sitting and not install it. But where can we find that money?
Yeah, there, if you recall from the from the concept, there were kind of, if I described this, the playground as being in kind of thirds, there's the the lower third, which is the tot area, the toddler area. There's the middle third, which has the you know, twelve year old type play structure and the splash pad on the east. And then there's the north area, which is kind of the nature play area. It's where we transitioned from an artificial surface to the uh, manufactured wood fiber surface. If we were absolutely forced to, we would probably eliminate the northern third of the playground from the project, and that would just become a grassy area. The the play features in that area included the um, the the Via Ferrata, the rock feature with the ropes coming off of it. It included the um, roller slide, which we we would still have because we've already ordered that. But the the landscaping, the earthwork needed to actually host that feature could be cut out of the project. That could just be graded flat, and we can put grass down there. So that's probably what we would cut if we were forced to, the northern third of the playground, and the playground would be about thirty percent smaller. So that's that is something we've discussed.
And you obviously didn't get a bid on that to know how much that would cost.
Um, no, we bid the whole project with all three thirds.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, but you haven't discussed that with Gino.
No, not yet. I mean, we haven't even offered them the contract yet.
Right, right.
So it's a little premature to discuss changes to the contract.
Sure.
Yeah.
And Councilman Schreiber, if the worst fear that I have comes to pass and their first six inches of soil reveals something that the geotechnical report didn't identify, we may be back here looking at other changes, but the goal here is to get this thing put to bed um, and open it up and have a different approach when we approach park projects in the future.
Here, here.
Any other questions from council? Madam Cork, have any members of the public signed up to speak on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Rebecca Holland.
Hello, Ms. Holland. Can you hear us out there on Zoom land?
Uh, yes, I can. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor and council. I have been following this project from the get-go, and it is very concerning. Yeah, this is underwater. The staff member was just saying eighty six K. I had it down at forty seven K is what I figured. Um, I'm wondering, are the, you know, even in tonight's payables, there was close to twelve thousand for a consulting um, fees that go toward playground. And what concerns me is that this is just over budget. And the whole project is 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 a mess. You know, in the private world, families would never be able to go forward because a bank would never lend you the money. If you if you get these kind of bids for your project, you go back to the architect and say, hey, we need to cut this and cut that. That's basically what it's coming to, to spend everything else that the community of community money. You don't have to go to a bank, so now it's just dipping into the community money. And that just seems so irresponsible. I think that I'd like to ask you to table this, and you don't have to accept a bid. You this is what my my father was an architect and he used to do very big projects. And he used to pride himself all the time in saying he brought it in at budget, and he kept it in budget. And you would work until you get it within the amount of money. You've got five hundred and sixty thousand dollars that came in a grant matched by community money. That's the that's the pot of gold. There's there's your pot. Now you have to do what you need to do. And and the fact that the playground equipment, the other good equipment, has been discarded. Um, that doesn't make any sense to to me. Um, nobody has answered up about that. You're making good on a set of playground swings, but the rest of it, it's just like the whole project has been has been poorly managed. And I would ask you to reconsider reconsider this and not just go into it knowing that you're going to be underwater. That's just really not fair. That's that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holland. Madam Cork, anyone else from the public that would just to speak on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the agreement with Gino Construction of Idaho for construction of the inclusive playground and splash pad at Traverse Park under city agreement A twenty four five three zero zero dash six.
So moved.
Moved by Dick. Seconded by Espiro. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Duquette.
I'm sure it's going to be a lovely, wonderful playground, and I'm glad it's going to be going through, but I cannot support this part of it right now. No.
Counselor Howarth.
Yes.
Counselor Dick.
Yes.
Counselor Sprowl.
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber.
No.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Moving on to new business, um, staff has proposed some changes to city code. How's everyone doing? Anyone need a quick couple minute break?
Yep. Sure.
Uh, we will recess for five minutes for a bathroom break. It is seven fifty six, resuming council meeting with um, new business. Staff has proposed some changes to city code regarding dogs in park, and I will now again yield the floor to Jason Welker.
Okay, and I'm gonna again take a moment to struggle with my screen here so that I can actually control. Okay. All right, um, we've got two, there are actually three agenda items, but they're related to two proposals around dogs in city parks. Uh, I it's everybody up here, all of you have heard members of the public come to you this spring and make proposals for um, the the goose situation at City Beach. Uh, we've been listening, we've been talking to those citizens, and we've worked out what we think is a pretty good proposal that can uh, take care of some goose mitigation and allow the community to implement uh, the vision that they've brought to you all. So we love public-private partnerships here. This is an example of partnering with a community organization to solve a community problem. So you can see it here, the proposal is to amend Sandpoint City Code's seven five three A and five four five A to allow off-leash dogs at City Beach for a limited controlled effort at waterfowl mitigation. Now, in the last couple of weeks, we've we've gone through a couple iterations of these code amendments. We've gotten feedback from the community. We've gotten feedback from police. They they had a lot to say about our first draft of code amendments here. Um, and we're really pleased with what we came up with. So the proposal, as you've read, I don't need to read it to you, is basically to um, allow to to adopt a a permit that community groups, hopefully organized groups, can can come together, uh, apply for a permit. It's a free permit. Um, and then they'll basically be permitted to take dogs that will be wearing, I think Matt will describe it uh, for you again in a moment, um, some sort of vest to make it visible that they're, you know, a a a permitted dog. And and at random times throughout the week, come into City Beach and basically harass geese. That's what they're gonna do. They're gonna harass geese and hopefully make it unpleasant for geese to call City Beach home. Um, talking to the police chief in previous efforts to use dogs to mitigate the 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 goose situation, it was, uh, in fact, in our code, you you've seen the existing code, um, which I'll scroll down here. The existing code does allow for uh, for dogs utilized by city for purposes of water, of controlling waterfowl. This is not a city effort. In the past, we've we've hired contracted with paid professional dog handlers to come in. From the from the police chief's uh, recollection, what would happen was they'd come in at eight forty five, they'd be gone by nine, and at nine oh five, a hundred geese would land at City Beach. So the the they the the geese learned that there were times and very limited numbers of of dogs that were actually a nuisance to them. And they would immediately come back when when the dog was gone. So the the vision here is to have A, more dogs, B, it's not going to cost the city any money, and C, it's going to be totally random as far as when the dogs are in City Beach. And that randomness is what's hopefully going to deter the geese. So that is the proposal. I did invite Matt here tonight, who you've heard from a couple of times. Matt, if you want to just come up, if you don't mind, and just sharing briefly, um, you you've shared your vision with them, but if you can tell us what's happened in the last month, six weeks since you last presented to them in terms of coordination efforts
Right.
with the community.
No, it's my pleasure. First of all, it's good to see everybody again, and uh, I just want to thank you. I just think it's a a a great moment to just share in a moment of of solidarity. Uh, the city is behind you. The the private businesses are behind you. I am just a private business representative. And uh, we know that we have a history trying to to get rid of the geese. And it's we've had tons, some drastic measures, including including euthanizing, and the whole community is behind a non-lethal solution to the geese problem. So that's what got me started this in the first place. I was I was passionate about that and still am. And I just had a chance to talk to uh, some who I consider superstars in the community. Uh, Jane is is here, and I think she'll talk today too. I sat down with her. Uh, I some councilmen, I don't, you you know, you know, if you spoke to me face to face about it, Jason as well. But um, from the private business side, I spoke with the the people at Shake a Paw, which is the most popular pet market here in town. Uh, Jen, who's the um, she owns the place, and she's also a professional dog handler and breeder. Uh, Rebecca, who works below her at Heartfire Dog Training. Uh, Mandy Evans and I, we have not had a chance to sit face to face, but a a good uh, phone conversation with Better Together Animal Alliance. My wife, who's an expert dog handler and helped pet care out there, and who also stayed here all this time because it's so important to her as well as to me. But the idea is, um, with community help, uh, these people have volunteered their time and their services. Um, at least in the onset, to to start the program up, get something going in the in the first year, uh, where they would be happy to help vet the dogs. Uh, you could bring a dog into uh, these this establishment, Shake a Paw, where that's located. Uh, the dog can be reviewed based on whether he or she is gets along well with other dogs, has has a goose, you know, chasing instinct, and can be recalled, essentially a a gentle, safe family dog. That dog could be issued a jacket, uh, that jacket could be used to identify them to the public. So people don't just think that it's, oh, dogs are allowed off-leash. No, it's not quite that. We have a program in place. I believe that that honestly, the more I think about this through, and the more that I talk about getting a permit and everything, there'll be need to to wiggle this in a little bit and figure out exactly the, but the biggest thing that's incumbent is to go ahead and reverse the longstanding policy about thirty years of no dogs allowed. We have to tonight, let's reverse that. Let's make it so dogs, minimum, uh, you know, dogs allowed and a middle and and limited off-leash dog hours. So we can implement, you know, step one. And I I uh, had a very uh, good talk with Kyle, and and one thing would be, how would the city like this to look? Would it like to be a run by strictly by Parks and Rec? Would they like it to be a a nonprofit outreach? Would they like to see a community involvement? You know, how, what superstructure would the city like to see? And I think, just as a private citizen, I think we can oblige. We have a superstar team ready to jump in and do this. So with a little bit of vision on how you guys would like to see it unfold, you know, I volunteer my services, and I have I have friends and in a team ready to help. So I urge you to to push this through today. It's an amazingly important environmental maneuver as well as a a our city parks are super valuable to us, and and we we love them, and they are filled with goose poop. So let's let's take an important step. I don't want to take up too much time, but but thank you very much.
Thank you so much for stepping up and supporting this. Uh, as I said in the beginning, when Jane approached me, um, and you, I believe, uh, I love it when people come forward, not just with complaints, but with solutions, and you did just that. So well done.
Okay, I'll take questions in a moment, but first let's just go over the two code amendments that are required to be implemented to allow this to happen. The first is the the language around dogs, specifically at City Beach. You can see what's in current code. Um, it was advised that we update code so that it is uh, consistent between owner and handler. It won't always be the dog owner that is handling the dog, so we are amending that one word in existing code. And they were adding a third exception to the no dogs in City Beach rule, and that is dogs allowed off-leash for waterfowl control as part of city sanctioned groups. It's basically, that's basically it. The additional code amendment that's required is around leash laws. This one's left intentionally vague. It doesn't specifically say City Beach. It does say dogs. Well, the 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 proposed ex- exception to our leash law is that dogs off-leash in designated areas of public property where dogs are allowed to be off-leash, provided the dogs are under adequate vice control and owner of the uh, of the owner or handler. They might, of course, owners or handlers must be required to carry a leash and be prepared to restrain the dog, yada, yada, yada. So that this is what's uh, being proposed. There is going to, we're we're still kind of working on what the signage situation is going to be at City Beach, because this is not a carte blanche. Anybody can come down with their dogs off-leash, but we want people to understand what we're doing if they do see a dog off-leash. So we're probably gonna have an informational sign or a kiosk of some sort where people can read about what's going on, in case they're wondering. Uh, handlers will be required to have a permit and have it on them at at the time that they walk their dog off-leash in the beach or at the beach. Okay.
Questions for um, planning and community development director Welker?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schreiber.
First off, I want to say thank you so much for getting this through so quickly. Um, and thank you to the public for stepping up and making this happen. I did not expect it to happen this fast, and I'm very impressed, very impressed. Um, the only thoughts that I had, and it's definitely nothing that would hold up uh, passing this tonight, but you mentioned signage. I think that perhaps we could have temporary, like, sandwich board signage that puts out just when the dogs are there. So as soon as the dogs are gone, it goes back and everybody sees no dogs allowed. But when it is there, there's a sandwich sign explaining why the dogs are there.
That's a great suggestion.
And then also, I like the idea of the dogs having jackets, so they're they look like they're working animals. Um, one idea I had was put a a numbered permit that the jacket has the number of the permit on the dog, so that if you do have a bad actor, people can say, oh, no, it was dog number three one five that was chasing children. And then you can go talk to that specific person. That way, the whole program doesn't get thrown out just because of one or two problems. But other than that, um, I love this.
Great suggestion.
The sandwich board is a good idea, because that can just be stashed, you know, next to the snack shack or something, and then any dog handler knows they have to go grab that and put it out at a visible place.
Yeah.
Yeah, signage is key.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Welker?
Maybe the dog could poop too. I know mine would.
I have I have a couple of questions. When the inevitable happens and a dog is successfully caught caught a goose, what do we, what are our thoughts then? Is there a disposal bag? Is there a axe? Is there a dunk tank? What what? I mean, I'm imagining a successful dog, a wounded goose, a bunch of children crying because the dog, the goose is, you know.
Thought about that, Matt?
Crawling around.
I don't think they would.
Uh, well, we'll we'll have some, I just bring it up.
Yeah, no, that's a good.
Come up with a plan, and we'll have some public comment in just a second.
Yeah.
And then a question for Zach. Is there a way to indemnify the city if we permitted this activity and a dog does something horrific to our human? Um, can can we make sure we have some language?
I think the best thing we can do is when an applicant applies for a permit, we can.
Make them take that liability.
Yeah, they can uh,
assume it.
Execute some sort of indemnification clause at that.
Excellent. Those are my only two questions. Great job. Excited to see it. It's gonna work. Oh, go ahead, Councilman Howarth.
Yes, I've got three questions real quick. Um, do any of the code changes allow for dogs to be off-leash in other parks other than the City Beach?
No, not the code amendments tonight. There are, there are public parks where dogs can be off-leash. The one that comes to mind is um, the Bay Trail, which is, the Bay Trailhead is a city park. I think there are some others articulated in code as well. Hickory Park.
Okay, uh, my second quick question, uh, Jason is, do we?
I'm sorry, I didn't answer that question, Rick. Hold on. This 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 amendment is not proposing dogs off-leash anywhere else at any other parks. There there's a second agenda item tonight about allowing dogs in a park on leash, but no other parks are being proposed for off-leash dogs.
Okay, thank you. Um, the second one is, do we have a duration for the permit? So if we if we allow for this in City Beach, does that permit have a duration?
That's that's one of the questions on the permit application. Is this for a single day? Is this for a date range? Is this for an annual permit? Those are things that the applicant will have to indicate on their permit application.
And are we thinking that we're going to do a trial period here initially to go see the effectiveness before we give, you know, all summer? What are your thoughts on initial trial period?
Uh, we haven't specified that in this code amendment. The the key thing before we can even do a trial period is to amend the code. Um, there's going to be further conversations with the group that's organizing this to to determine, you know, are we, when are we going to evaluate this? You know, probably after the first month, after the third month and and see how it's going. If if it, if it's apparent that this is a catastrophic failure, we can pretty easily you know, cancel the program even before amending code back because the code is not giving anybody permission to go take park. Um, it is establishing a permit system. So we can just stop issuing permits right away and revoke permits that have been issued if we decide this is a a huge mistake.
Okay. And my my last question is, and and you started to touch upon this, if if visitors, if other dog owners see all of a sudden dogs in in the park, how are we going to control and limit their ability to go unleash their dogs? All of a sudden, they're seeing other dogs running around. And again, I can imagine a visitor coming into town has no idea what we're doing in a park.
Yeah.
And says, hey, I see other dogs out there. I'm going to go unleash mine. How do we control that?
Well, ironically, there's not enough control as it is. Talking to our community resource officers, there are already visitors coming to Sandpoint in the summer and bringing their dogs into City Beach Park. And this is a continual enforcement challenge of our community resource officers. So they will continue to enforce the codes as they are able to. Right now, like on any given, you know, Saturday, there's probably half a dozen dogs in City Beach Park, hopefully on leashes. Um, but but as soon as crows show up, they go around enforcing the current no dog rules. So crows will continue to enforce those rules. Um, the signage is important. Um, the the jackets, the vests that the dogs wear are going to be important. There's all sorts of, you know, uh, strategies we can implement to prevent this from being a free-for-all where somebody suddenly sees a dog off-leash and they go get their three dogs and let them run around the park. Those are going to be challenges, but we already face challenges with dogs in City Beach Park. There are dogs there daily. And even though they're, it's signed everywhere, the dogs are not allowed in there this time of year.
Okay, I I appreciate that thought. And and again, I guess just to close, that would I would have, uh, I guess a recommendation that we do a limited trial, come back to the council in a month and share what's happening on the positive side and what's, what are the challenges we're seeing with this new implementation?
Yeah, you you can rest assured, I'll be giving you an update within them, you know, probably at the second meeting in July or at the latest, assuming we've even rolled this out by then. So, yeah, I'll I'll be updating you. For sure.
Thing. Thank you, Jason.
Any other questions from the council? Are there members?
Comment.
Uh, questions?
Hey, wait a minute.
That's what the script says. Um, any members of the
Question.
Oh, you're going to make turn it. This is like jeopardy.
Are we going to make sure that we give it enough time before we yank it back?
I don't, I don't plan to yank it back. I mean,
Okay.
Want it to be.
Well, we're talking, we're talking about reevaluating.
I think I I think I meant I'll just give you an update in a month and let you know how it's going.
Okay.
If three young children have been maimed at that point, we probably will have pulled it back though. Yeah.
And I can't imagine these dogs are child maimers.
And Councilwoman Ducat, uh, if it's successful or not, of course, you and uh, any other council member can put something on the agenda to continue it or discontinue it.
Okay.
We'll have that discussion with questions then. Discussions amongst ourselves, questions to staff. In general.
Yeah, but you wouldn't let me discuss earlier.
Well, you can discuss.
Okay, and if I can interrupt for just a moment too, the child maiming made my oh. The lawyer perks up. One, one thing that we can do to additionally limit liability is make the applicants of the permits, um, verify that they've had no incidents with their dogs. Um, where they've been aggressive in any way at the time that they
Vaccinated.
They apply. Yeah, and that they're vaccinated. And we, I mean, we can go through that stuff as well.
And then that would be
Uh, and and it's important. I mean, this is, this is, we're making light of it, but but it is important that we
Right.
Take this seriously as well.
But we're not letting anybody come permit their dog, right? They have to have some training. They have to.
And it's through, through the process of permitting.
Right.
Actually, that
So that shouldn't that shouldn't be an issue. I'm wondering if we want to put in that and I don't know if you need to, in the code
Oh, no, it does.
That they would wear, that they will be wearing this. I mean, so that it's
I think um, Director Welker hears that as well as the other great suggestion of the numbers. I don't
I just wonder if it needs to be in there.
Oh, I don't think the code needs to be that specific. I think that's a flexibility discretion of
So one, one thing I will point out, the application for a permit does require a dog license number. You say, well, what's that? Well, we do have a dog license program at the city. I, we probably have about a fifty percent um, compliance rate with that, probably lower, a lot lower.
Try five percent.
I don't know if I'm complying with that.
Yeah.
Um, the dog owners are supposed to have a license. So to participate in this program, you will have to have a dog license with the city of Sandpoint. You will have to have vaccine records. So that we don't have backs, you know, rabid dogs in our park.
Yeah.
And am I, I, am I to assume that these dogs will be trained as I remember you first starting this talk? These dogs would have some training.
That is, that is the intention.
I can't just take my dog out there.
That that is the intention of having an organized group with the group name. And I believe they've come up with a pretty good name, the Fond du Rhin Paw Patrol.
Yeah, two dog trainers on there.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Um, we still got a lot ahead of us, so I'd like to um, ask, uh, are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Adam Clerk.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, just one moment. Amelia Boyd.
Hello again, Ms. Boyd.
Good evening again. So I have a lot of history as uh, Joel does as too, because we were on Parks and Rec Committee when this huge discussion was uh, for about over a year, year and a half about this issue. Um, I'm all for this program because I'm all for dogs. Uh, just devil's advocate, which we did discuss a lot was not everybody loves dogs. And there's a lot of people and children that are afraid of dogs. So um, you need to take that in consideration as far as our public's concerned. Um, and actually the things, the reason we didn't recommend that um, to council at the time was because of that. And there was a huge survey that we had uh, that was put out by the city. I think it was our largest response of all surveys, over about eight hundred respondents. And it was not yay or nay in favor of having dogs off-leash at the park. So if you were to look back a few years, uh, four or five years, it was really, really pretty much even for, you know, people were for having dogs chasing them. And people were against it. And it wasn't one group over the other. It was pretty even there. So that needs to be taken in consideration because I don't think there was a whole lot of um, me, for instance. I've come to the meetings, I've heard what um, this gentleman said in the discussion, but as far as a public out for the public to participate, I don't recall that ever happening in this process. Because I would have definitely been um, been there for those. So I don't think our public has been informed um, as a whole in this process, other than if you come to the meetings and you watch it and you read the minutes. Um, so I think there's a lot of people out there that don't know of this coming forward. Uh, so I think it's a great thing, but I also know that it's not going to be a great thing. Um, I'm all for mitigating goose poop because I've been trying to mitigate goose poop for, since I've been here. Um, so I, I, if it works, I think it would be great, but I think you're going to get a lot of backlash and there's going to be a lot of complainers. Um, I will not not lie, I I paid five bucks to two little boys that were riding their bikes around um, one year at City Beach and they were, you know, ri- riding around the geese. And I said, hey, I'll pay you five bucks to chase them into the water. They didn't touch them. They were very nice, respectful boys. Chased into the water, really respectfully, didn't harm them, and they got yelled at. Um, and so then I had to intervene and have, you know, some kind words, which they were kind. But um, so I think you need to be prepared for that backlash because it will happen. And so I hope your phone number, Jason, will be going to be ringing off the hook, I'm afraid. Um, so anyway, I just encourage more um, public input.
Thank you.
Thanks, Boyd.
Could we put it in the paper?
Uh, hopefully the paper will report on it. Hopefully the paper will report on it.
Alert people.
They they watch these meetings and
Daily B report on it.
It's front page of the paper today.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And reader.
Any other members of the public?
Matt, did you have anything additional to say?
Ms. Fritz, you're raising your hand.
And Jane, I have you here too. I was just talking.
I'd be happy to, uh, real quick. What, um, where I think that the 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 program could gain its success is um, specifically when the mayor asked the most incredible question, what do you do when your uh, dog gets a goose? I have a little Jack Russell that has never ever caught a goose in his life, and she must have chased thousands of geese in her life and has never caught one. The type of dogs that we're looking for, certainly in the upstart and the launch of this program, are people's dogs that are in the community already. We are looking for community members who already know that they have an incredibly gentle dog, that their dog loves to chase geese and their dog does not main people. So I understand that we have to view the worst-case scenario, right? But let's talk about what's actually happening. On the, there are certain people in the Sandpoint community that are going to say, no matter what, don't mess with the geese. We love the geese so much. In fact, humans are the biggest problem in the world. We love the geese. Let's just give them the parks and and let's lock all the humans away. And then there's other people that want those geese out of there and they're ready to go bring their rifles into the city park and shoot them all, right? We've got opposite extremes. Somewhere smack in the middle of that is this dog idea. Changing, we we all have to compromise a little bit here. There are people who are afraid of dogs. There are people who love dogs. A compromise is gentle dogs that serve the purpose of instead of paying kids to chase the geese, they're going to chase them themselves, let them run after them, scare them into the water. And we'll use a li- you start small, you start with dogs that are a sure thing, which what I mean is a gentle dog, a notoriously gentle dog. We got to use a lot, lot of common sense. We do have to jump through a lot of political uh, uh, hole, uh, you know, loopholes and things like that. But we're asking our community, if you're against dogs, are you for euthanizing geese? Because that's where we have, uh, that's the question in hand. This this dog policy is directly tied to our previous history of dealing with the geese, which has been rounding them up and gassing them and relocating them or outright euthanizing them. So then it's up to Sandpoint. How do you want to be, you know, to be known for? Uh, I I don't mean to preach or 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 anything about that, but we have wonderful community members in in place. Helping us to vet the dogs and choosing the, you know, the sure things. I don't, I don't want to be repetitive, but um, I would just remind that that we're not going to be able to please everybody, but we got to meet halfway. And and I believe that this program represents a very uh, 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 a big action mode, a a big point of action that can satisfy, you know, a big problem that we have in the community.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right.
Jane Fritz.
Before this old lady collapses. So thank you. First of all, I I want to say prior to uh, Joel's involvement, prior to Amelia's involvement. And having lived in this uh, community or surrounding communities for almost forty-five years now. The geese problem started when we banned dogs and in the city parks. And that was about now almost thirty years ago. And I think because if you talk to people like myself who've been here for a long time, they'll say there was not a geese problem. I want to thank the mayor and the council for putting this on the agenda. It was requested numerous times over a five-year period and was never allowed on the agenda for the public to discuss, for the council to discuss. So I'm just grateful for that. I, 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 the mayor asked me to do this a while ago, but I've had some really um, serious personal issues that I've not been able to attend to it till today. But I hope you have a copy of what I typed up. Having been involved in late twenty eighteen, when the public had no idea what the Parks and Rec Commission had put forth. And were never really allowed to talk about it except for three minutes at the beginning of every city council meeting. It was so unfair to the public, so unfair to this community. And I I really want you to pay attention to that history because it ignored biology. It ignored good sense. It was not a good plan to bring wildlife services into this and pay them thousands of dollars. I mean, the bottom line, in twenty nineteen, in June, this is the month to approve this. Because in June of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, we removed a total of five hundred and sixty-three geese. Adults, juveniles and goslings, separated from their adult parents, I might add. And I have a video that I dare anyone to watch because it's very difficult to watch. I was there working as a journalist with Chuck Smith, who's a videographer. He edited this fourteen-minute video. And it's horrible what we did, okay? Ms. Boyd was present that first year. Um, people that were involved in the beginning wouldn't even, I'm sorry, Mayor. I've been involved in this for so long. I need a few more minutes if I could because I want to just say
I can give you a little more time, uh, Ms. Fritz, but we do have
I know.
Agenda ahead of us.
Thirty seconds would be great. So I wanted you to do that and someone to watch that. But I also want you to realize that this is a multi-pronged approach. Dogs are really important. I I really commend Matt and all of his work. And and yours, Jason, because we could just allow leash dogs right now year-round instead of just in the fall. And you'd be surprised how the geese would just move away. They are predators to geese. Um, they are molting now and which means they cannot fly, so they can only escape. Two community members offered this um, to buy it for the state, for the city. And instead, three years in a row, they offered. Instead, they hired wildlife services to do the capture and removal. Twice, the city applied for uh, in the depredation permit that they have to get um, for euthanasia.
Can you?
The first one was not allowed last year. I mean, if this is the kind of publicity Sandpoint wants.
Ms. Fritz, I've told you personally, I will never sign a
I know that, but I'm just saying that
Bill Geese, so.
That you have to realize the history though and what's happened. So the solutions, I gotta just want you to read those. Dogs are really important. The away with geese is a really important habitat changes, boulders, flower boxes, planting peppermint. There's all kinds of things.
I um, I have to have, ask you to
I know, I'm sorry. It's just that after five years, I get a chance to actually speak.
Well, well, that's
And have people ask questions.
By uh, keeping it in the, in the
As a journalist, I worked on this two solid years. And it was incredible how I had was lied to, obfuscated and I'm just so grateful that you're
Appreciate your endurance and maybe, maybe you'll write an article, um, you know, expressing your appreciation. So
Send a press release to the spokesman and to the inlander who really were the only media who told the truth.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. Any other public comments, Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I will now ask the clerk to read the title of this first ordinance, allowing off-leash dogs at City Beach for waterfall control and with an amendment to Sandpoint City Code Title VII, Chapter Five, Section Three A.
An ordinance of the City of Sandpoint and Municipal Corporation of the State of Idaho, amending City, Sandpoint City Code Title VII, Chapter Five, Section Three A, Beach Rules and Regulations Providing for Severability and Providing for Publication and an Effective Date.
I would entertain a motion that the ordinance passes I would entertain a motion that the ordinance passes first reading by title only and the summary is approved.
Moved. Second.
Uh, moved by Duquette, second by um, Espiro. This'll be a roll call vote.
Counselor Howarth? Mr. Mayor, let the record reflect that Counselor Howarth has left the meeting. Counselor Ducat?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Back.
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Howarth?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, ordinance has passed its first reading by title only and the summary is approved.
I would entertain a motion that the rules regarding three separate readings once in the ordinance entirety be suspended if the ordinance passes its second and third reading under suspension of the rules.
Moved.
Second. Moved by Schreiber, second by Dick. This'll be a roll call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Howarth?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Ducat?
Yes.
Motion passes, the ordinance is considered read and passed and adopted under suspension of the rules and will become effective following publication and summary in the newspaper. I will now ask the clerk to read the title of the second ordinance providing an additional exception to the city's leash law with an amendment to Sandpoint City Code Title Five, Chapter Four, Section Five A three.
An ordinance of the City of Sandpoint and Municipal Corporation of the State of Idaho amending Sandpoint City Code Title Five, Chapter Four, Section Five A three Leash Law, Providing for Severability and Providing for Publication and an Effective Date.
I didn't say a motion, the ordinance passes first reading by title only and the summary is approved.
Moved.
Second. Moved by Espiro, second by Dick. This'll be a roll call vote.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Howarth?
Yes.
Counselor Ducat?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
The ordinance has passed its first reading by title only and the summary is approved. I would entertain a motion that the rules requiring three separate readings once in the ordinance entirety be suspended if the ordinance passes its second and third reading under suspension of the rules.
Moved. Second.
Moved by Dick, second by Schreiber. Or I believe, Ducat?
Better.
This'll be a roll call vote.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Howarth?
Yes.
Counselor Ducat?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Motion passes, the ordinance is considered read, passed and adopted under suspension of the rules and become effective following publication of the summary in the newspaper. Uh, I've um.
Mr. Mayor, I believe your script um, doesn't indicate, but I believe we need to go back to Jason for another presentation.
So this is another amendment regarding um, leash dogs in Travers Park. Um, and I turn it back to Director Welker for this brief presentation.
Okay, we'll keep this one brief. It's very straightforward. Another amendment proposed tonight is to allow leash dogs not in Travers Park, but on the paved pathway around Travers Park and Great Northern and Centennial Park uh, year-round. Currently, they're only allowed from September fifteenth to April fifteenth. This has been like a very regular request from citizens, particularly residents of the neighborhood who want to use this approximately one mile, one and a half mile pathway to walk their dogs. It makes sense. Dogs are not allowed inside the park. They're only allowed on the paved pathway. This does not mean parents will be able to bring their dogs to their kids' Little League games, lacrosse tournaments. It's only on the pathway. So that's just something I wanted to make clear for council. Um, yeah, that's that's the amendment that's being proposed. You can see the exact language here. We're literally changing one word. We're changing to year-round instead of the 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 period of September fifteenth to April fifteenth.
Are there any questions from council to Director Welker on this proposed amendment?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Howarth.
Uh, yes, can you give us some history of why the limited access was put in place originally?
That decision was made long before I was at the city. I I think there were, there was generally uh, more of an anti-dog sentiment.
Uh, yeah, and and to my understanding, maybe Councilman Spiro or Dick have more history. Um, the summer, the 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 rest of the year is a high utilization period for the fields. The thought is, you know, people don't always contain and control their dogs well, and you could get a bunch of dog poop out in the fields. Um, so they limit it to, you know, non-high activity periods, September through April, um, to avoid any potential messes.
There you go.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Director Welker? Madam Clerk, are there any members of the public who'd like to comment on this? Thank you. Can you give your sheet to?
Okay. I'll be quick, but I'm Jackie Hannah, and I live off of um, Travers Park. And I just want, I guess, the council to know too that there are many of us that have appreciated being able to walk our dogs on the, around the park. And there are people like myself that I pick up stray dog poop all the time.
Thank you.
Because I'm trying to make sure that we get to have this privilege. And I also think that the majority of the people have their dogs on leash. They're not um, off-leash, and that's been a concern too. Um, so anyway, trying my best to keep the privilege.
Thanks, Jackie. Any other members of the public who wish to speak on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
So I would entertain, oh, um, where are we here? Excuse me, I jumped up. Uh, I would now ask the clerk to um, read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Sandpoint and Municipal Corporation of the State of Idaho amending Sandpoint City Code Title Five, Chapter Four, Section Five B two, Dogs Allowed on Leash Providing for Severability and Providing for Publication and an Effective Date.
I would entertain a motion for the ordinance to pass its first reading by title only and the summary is approved.
Moved.
Sessioned by Dick, second by Espiro. This'll be a roll call vote.
Counselor Ducat?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Howarth?
Yes.
Ordinance has passed its first reading by title only and the summary is approved. I would entertain a motion that the rules requiring three separate readings once in the ordinance entirety be suspended if the ordinance passes its second and third readings under suspension of the rules. This will, uh, I need a motion.
Moved.
Moved by Dick, second by Schreiber. This'll be a roll call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Howarth?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Ducat?
Yes.
Motion passes, the ordinance is considered read, passed and adopted under suspension of the rules and become effective following publication, summary in the newspaper. Thank you, council members. Thank you, Director Welker, uh, for moving this right along. Uh, next, item fifteen, uh, city staff seeks authorization to apply for a U.S. Department of Transportation Federal Highway Administrative Active Transportation Infrastructure Investment Program seeking funds for design of the Division Avenue Corridor Project. I will now yield the floor to Holly Ellis, Instruction Manager.
I'm moved over here. I came too too early. I've never been on this.
All right.
Okay, um, here we go. There's my screen. Uh, good evening, mayor and council. I'm here tonight to talk about the Division Avenue Corridor Project and a potential grant opportunity. Just brief background on the project. I think you've heard about this project several times, um, particularly older council members. It all started in uh, February twenty twenty-one. Council adopted a road safety audit that was completed on Division Avenue from Michigan to Spruce Street. Um, that road safety audit identified safety improvements that were recog- recognized along that corridor. Uh, the reason our particular interest of this corridor is Division is an arterial street, so it does see a lot of vehicular traffic. It's also a truck route. At the same time, it's home to uh, three public schools, and there's uh, two other schools nearby. So there's thousands of students who are attending schools along this corridor. Uh, in May of twenty twenty-one, the multimodal uh, transportation master plan was adopted by council. Uh, the Division Avenue Corridor project concept in that plan took the road safety audit and developed a concept from those safety improvements. In um, September of twenty twenty-two, council approved uh, application for a child pedestrian safety grant, which was uh, accepted. That construction was the first phase of Division, which just constructed two blocks of the east side of Division, um, which was the first phase of the project. In December of twenty twenty-three, uh, council approved staff to apply for Phase Two, which continued that eastern corridor um, improvement for an additional two blocks. We're still waiting to hear back about the award results. And then earlier this spring, uh, staff restripped Division Avenue to narrow the travel lanes to provide traffic calming and widen the bike lanes. So there have been several initiatives to improve safety in this corridor. So the project itself, um, the image to the right shows the multimodal transportation plan, uh, concept improvement, which is the project that we're here today to discuss. And then it also shows a map, which are the limits. So this project would improve Division from highway to to Baldy Mountain Road. And this uh, street section would provide for a wider sidewalk on the east side of Division, planer strips on both sides. The vehicular lanes would narrow and to provide traffic calming and sharrows, and there would be a wider multi-use path along the west side of Division. So more information on the grant to the right, it just is showing um, FHWA strategic goals. But this is an Active Transportation Infrastructure Investment Program Grant, known as ATIP. Um, it has forty-five million dollars appropriated. There are two types of grants that this that can be funded by this grant that is going to be administered by the Federal Highway Administration. The first is Planning Design Grant, and that's what we're going after. Um, the range for funding is between one hundred and two million, one hundred thousand and two million dollars. The other type of project is a construction project, and those projects range from seven point five to fi- to twelve million dollars. Uh, this is a federal grant, so the share by the federal government is up to eighty percent, which would require a local match. Um, again, this is administered by the Federal Highway Administration. The purpose of the grant is to provide safe and connective active transportation infrastructure. And by active infrastructure, they mean um, any mobility that's human-powered, so walking, biking, rollerblading, which is where, which is where uh, the Division Avenue Corridor is uh, such a good fit because we are trying to improve multi-mobility along that corridor. If we are successful in this application, I'll, I will stress it is very competitive. Um, it's certainly worth applying because this is a good, this project is a great fit. Um, but if we are unsuccessful, it may give us an advantage in additional funding rounds. There is more money in the pipeline. So if they do obligate more funds, we might be better positioned. Um, we'll also get an opportunity to get feedback from the grant application, and it helps grow the program. Um, but the funds wouldn't be obligated until twenty twenty-six, so that's when we would see the money. So the request before council is to approve application for the Active Transportation Infrastructure Investment Program for up to one point two million dollars for design efforts. So again, we're just going for the design effort, so the grant, the match would be three hundred thousand dollars on that. Um, and this is administered, again, by Federal Highway Administration.
Thank you, Holly. Um, I think it's a great fit, especially with all the schools on that corridor. Um, thanks for bringing this to our attention and putting together a great summary. Uh, do council members have any questions for Holly?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one question. Do we have the match?
So we would budget for it in the future years. So the funds would be, we would be awarded in September of twenty twenty-six and obligate those funds in that fiscal year budget.
Awesome.
Any other questions from council? Madam Clerk, do any members of the public uh, wish to speak on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution authorizing and directing city staff to apply for a U.S. Department of Transportation Federal Highway Administration Active Transportation Infrastructure Investment Program for design of the Division Avenue Corridor Project.
Moved. Second.
Uh, moved by Schreiber, second by Espiro. This'll be a roll call vote.
Counselor Ducat?
Yes.
Counselor Howarth?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, new business, item sixteen, additional resort city restaurant liquor license. Um, I've included the proposed resolution in the packet, which if approved, would allow Sandpoint to be included in the list that's being compiled by the Idaho State Police Alcohol Beverage Control Resort Cities that will be allowed up to three additional liquor licenses for restaurants in our town under new legislation that'll go into effect next month, July first. Idaho State Police has requested our response on, in this regard, by the end of next week. Um, this uh, resolution is required for us to be uh, eligible to consider uh, the expansion of number of liquor licenses in our community. It does not oblige us to. Uh, there's a waiting list. Um, I believe the person in first place signed up in nineteen seventy-nine. Um, I am not an expert on the variety of different ways that you can get a liquor license. I do understand that we have more than uh, what our population uh, would typically allow. Um, and ho- honestly, Councilman Dick is the expert on this. Um, but um, as this legislation was being passed, it's new this year, um, some of the targeted communities were small towns such as, if you've ever been to Victor, uh, or some other very small towns that may only be, have one or two um, uh, opportunities to sell liquor because of their population, but they get a large influx of tourists in the summer, so this, or in the winter. Uh, so this was an effort to allow those very small towns to uh, respond to the demand uh, that they they see. It does apply to us, so what's before you tonight is uh, this resolution, and if you approve it, uh, we then will have the ability to consider um, based on that uh, prioritized list of um, authorizing up to three additional liquor license in our community. So with that, uh, do council members have any questions?
Do we have restaurants that don't have liquor license?
Many.
Do we? Okay.
And and Councilman Dick, I'll 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 move away from the strict application of question because he's a resource here. Um, can, maybe for the benefit of.
Maybe a little bit of history.
Yeah, just, I know you know how all this works. There's, there's, there's resort licenses, there's continuing operation licenses, there's a bunch. How, what's the base level uh, allocation?
So if you see, if you look at the resolution here, at your second whereas, I'll just kind of give you a brief history here. So there's one retail sale, liquor-by-the-drink license limited for every fifteen hundred people. Where this came about is the City of Driggs specifically has two liquor licenses, one at their golf course and one at their airport. And they receive an insane amount of tourists that come through there that typically leave the area according to the restaurant owners that do not have liquor licenses to go to other cities that do have liquor licenses. There is approximately, what, twenty resort cities in the state of Idaho, uh, Sandpoint being one of them. Um, part of the prerequisite of being a resort city is having a population of ten thousand or under. Uh, I do want to step back to last year prior to Senate Bill Number thirteen eighty-one being passed with three additional resort licenses. Last year, Senate Bill One One Two Zero was introduced and passed. Um, I'm sorry, I'll try to be as concise as I can here. Part of the Idaho Constitution that makes liquor licenses even available is having temperance in the Constitution. Temperance allowed for the quota system to have so many per uh, your population, that fifteen hundred. Where there's always been an issue in all communities in Idaho is that if you wanted to open up a bar or a restaurant that served alcohol, you had to wait until you hit that next fifteen hundred. These waiting lists for all the cities, um, we know, I I personally know the person that's number three on the list for Sandpoint. He's been on for over twenty years right now. Um, so if you are new to the area and you want to start a restaurant and you want to have liquor by the drink, you better get in line and chances are you're probably never going to get that license. With that said, the Idaho Constitution then created an asset with the quota liquor licenses for those who are able to um, purchase them somewhere along the line. So for instance, uh, my last liquor license that I purchased, my wife and I, was two hundred thousand dollars. It was a hundred and eighty thousand dollars uh, with eighteen thousand going to the state of Idaho and a transfer fee. It was in terribly challenging to get. Um, you have to wait till somebody dies or somebody goes out of business. Uh, restaurants in and of themselves, as well as bars, are not the type of places that people want to come in and buy because they don't have a very good return on investment, uh, plus the hours that you have to work, which makes it very hard. If you take a look at those liquor licenses, uh, SB One One Two Zero that was passed last year basically rendered the ability for current liquor license owners to sell or lease their liquor licenses after July of twenty twenty-three. Um, that is basically our 401K policy, right? If you gotta think about the restaurant industry, I'm tabbing managers that are in their twenties and early thirties to purchase my restaurant in the next twenty years. Most of those folks do not qualify for traditional financing through a bank where they could come to myself after I've trained them and they've worked for ten years. I can lease them both my restaurant and the liquor license, and I can carry contract as a safe way for them to do that with them not having to get turned down by every single. with them not having to get turned down by every single bank. And it's comfortable for me because if they screw up, I can go back and get the restaurant, right? SB one one two zero is basically pulled away, it'd be like pulling away your 401K, right? It's gone.
You said they prohibited transfers, future transfers?
Future transfers are prohibited and we cannot lease that out. There is a way to sell it. Uh, but Captain Rocky Gribson, I think if he was honest and he was standing here right now, they have no way to chart how those liquor licenses would be sold after July first of twenty twenty-three. Uh, more problems with this particular one. Uh, it comes, Sandpoint is in a very odd situation with this. Our population, uh, according to Google, puts us at one of ten thousand and five hundred, maybe as a year ago. And that's depending on how you use the census. Um, we know that there are liquor license owners in the community today that will challenge our resort cities' population and resort city's standing um legally if this body is to give another liquor license. Now, I certainly as being a liquor license owner, I don't want, I think uh all the competition is great. I think it breeds novelty. I think it breeds um great practices in trying to keep your employees and coming up with great things in customer service. Uh, where we were very frustrated is there was no body to represent us as independent bar and restaurant owners. There are over thirteen hundred of us in the state of Idaho that own liquor licenses or did prior to SB one one two zero. At the bare minimum, at the literal bare minimum, those liquor licenses were worth a hundred thousand dollars.
Councilman Dick, I, I, I don't mean to interrupt you. I'm so sorry. I just want to preserve your, your independence. Um, I ask for sort of background and you're kind of straying into opinion.
I apologize. Sure. Can I give you one last thing?
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're free to step down if you don't want to vote and give your opinion upfront, I believe.
Um, I will.
Yeah, and.
If you don't mind, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I just want to protect you and everyone else.
I appreciate that.
And to clarify, you, you would be recusing, recusing yourself from voting.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Um. Yeah, you don't need to foul.
Do you live in the same?
Hi, my name is Justin Dick. I'm a Sandpoint resident, six oh two South Ella Avenue, Sandpoint. Thank you very much. Uh, where I was going with that, though, there are thirteen hundred liquor license owners. Each of those liquor licenses is worth at least a hundred thousand dollars. That is a hundred and thirty million dollars worth of assets that was stripped away by the state of Idaho of, of these citizens. You can only imagine, they are not very happy, and they are going to do whatever they can to claw back. Uh, where we were very frustrated is that no one at the legislature, um, nobody, the lobbyist, Senator Guthrie, nobody came to the table with an opportunity for us to um gain back anything that we were going to lose. Maybe a larger discount at the liquor store. Right now, we get a five percent discount at the Idaho State Liquor Store. Okay. Um, with that said, we have liquor license owners not only in our community, but in every single resort community that will challenge the census population of all resort communities, which is especially pertinent to Sandpoint because we know that we are on the cusp of ten thousand people. Uh, if we are to legally challenge that and call a census, and that census shows that we are over ten thousand people, we lose our ability as a resort town to have our retail tax uh that we're able to put on. But I think the bigger thing is that we also would need to treat our stormwater, right? Which I think is huge in this community, knowing that we are having a challenging time treating the stormwaters that we have right now, right? And how many millions of dollars. Uh, secondly, uh, and what I'm more concerned about out of all of this is this whole thing, in my personal estimation, came about through the Idaho Beer and Wine Distributors Association who distribute, or the beer and wine to all of your restaurants and your supermarkets and your convenience stores in the state of Idaho. Outside of our state and states where uh liquor is not, where liquor is privatized, let's, let's say Washington state. These same distributors distribute your beer, wine, and your alcohol. The bigger play here is to privatize alcohol in the state of Idaho, which would mean, and, and if those of you that have been keeping track in Washington from when they uh had a state-run liquor department versus their public, or excuse me, their private liquor, right? You now open up liquor to be in convenience stores, at your Costcos, at your Walmarts, uh, at your Safeways, at your Yokes, at your Super Ones. One of the things we really love about the controlled state like Idaho is we minimize the access of liquor in this community, right? There is one place in Sandpoint, there is one place in Ponderay, and it generates uh roughly a hundred and twenty million dollars that they're able to give off to all sorts of things around the state right now. I mean, it is a great thing. But we could also do that by privatizing liquor and allowing myself to buy a liquor store and open up a liquor store, having various liquor outlets all around Sandpoint. I think there's a strong correlation uh between privatized liquor and the crime rates going up. And you can look across the statistics. Like I said, Washington is a wonderful example of what happens when you go from a state-controlled to a uh privatized system, uh, not only with crime and access.
My apologies for interrupting, but I don't know if you are tracking this public testimony, but it has been three minutes.
Okay. Um.
And I, I'll, I'll leave it at that. I think I spent, and, and if anybody else.
You are an expert. Go ahead and um, I, I, I know you're. Um.
I, I will say this, we spent, yeah, we, we'll keep going on. Um, we have been down, we have testified in front of the Boise Legislature. We have talked to every representative that would speak with us. Um, like I said, the, the most disheartening thing about all of this is that the executive director of the Idaho Beer and Wine Association, Jeremy Pisca, is the lobbyist for SB one one two zero, as well as had a hand in crafting thirteen eighty-one. Um, like I said, there is liability that I believe will come to Sandpoint and the rest of the resort communities that I say personally as a citizen, not as a counselor, um, that will come to this community and the other resort communities. I'm more scared to what happens to the state of Idaho. We live in a very high-trust society right now, uh, the way it is. And I think the introduction of more alcohol, I guess I'm also biased. I have not had a drink of alcohol in fourteen and a half years. Um, I understand what alcohol does. I understand what it does. Uh, I, I think we've all seen the effects of alcohol. I don't need to go into that. But I, I think we are on and we are approaching the slippery slope right now. There is a better way to get liquor licenses into the hands of people that want them besides a fifty-year waitlist and besides handing them out uh this way with thirteen eighty-one.
Mister Mayor?
Uh, go ahead, uh, Councilperson.
We don't, you know, serve alcohol at a restaurant, and I myself don't drink, uh, just personal choice. But I'm just want to make sure I'm tracking, Justin. Uh, you said Washington is private or public?
Private.
Right. And then Idaho is?
Controlled state.
So.
One of uh twelve, twelve or thirteen, I believe.
Okay. And if I'm understanding you correctly, this bill or this ordinance, this resolution, if, if we pass it, the, does it have any effect on our, our, our city?
So what it would do, it would open us up to allowing the state to um, if we could issue three more liquor licenses.
But do we have to be approved for that or it'd be guaranteed?
No, no, we would have to approve them on the council. Somebody would then have to come forward and petition us for a new liquor license.
But I mean, if this passes, we'll, we'll guarantee have that option.
Yes, we don't have to say yes to them. We can say no.
If I'm hearing this.
We don't pass this.
Right.
No one can approve this.
I'm hearing a concerned citizen right now say that this passing this would not be good for this ci- ci- citizens of Sandpoint or the communities. Is that correct?
Yes, but, but one caveat, though, you could pass the resolution tonight. And then you're going to be faced with having three different parties come to this body to ask for a liquor license, which this body does not have to. And I think you can weigh in on the, the greater details, um, the policing effort. I think that's a big one that got overlooked uh down at the Boise Legislature. What do the, what do the police forces look like in staff? Are they ready to handle three more liquor licenses and some of the challenges that come with that? Is the EMS ready? Is the hospital and the emergency staff ready? And those are questions that you'll be tasked with, but specifically this resolution, you can pass this without um. I don't think without challenge of the liquor license holders coming to challenge the census right off the bat. I think where they would be frustrated is if you gave out the one or three of those liquor licenses, there would be a legal challenge to the census of the resort community.
Right.
Uh, I have a question for either maybe Chief or maybe Mister Dick, you know. Uh, I come up with Connie's, the bank, two one nine Jalapeno's, the Edgewater, that bar on Pine Street, I don't know if it's called, and A and P. Do we have more than seven liquor licenses in Sandpoint?
Sam Bar?
What?
Do you have the Sam Bar?
That's the Pine Street.
Oh, Pine Street.
Fairgrounds has uh liquor license or, I don't remember, Rick, just.
So Mitzi's is in there, Fairgrounds is in there, the, uh, the clubs, so not the land, not the, uh.
Oh, the Elks.
The Elks Club has the facility, the ability. Beagles.
Eleven and Pastime or um the.
The Hive.
The Hive.
The Hive has one now.
And the dist- uh, the district.
The Hive is the, you know, the district.
The district, yeah.
You're up to twelve now.
Going off the top of my head, so I might be missing one or two, but there's, there's twelve plus.
Turvan, do they have a liquor license?
They're, no, they're just beer. They just went over to. See, that's how fast we're changing because they did. They got the heritage.
About thirteen in town, and if it were just based on population, one per fifteen hundred, just doing some quick math, we, we'd have uh one, two, three, four, six-ish, is that right? So we technically already have double the number of liquor license that a regular town, non-resort town would have.
Correct. And, and some of those, you do have a historical liquor licenses uh, like the Turvan, and then you also have shoreline liquor licenses waterfront,
Yeah.
which you would get from the bank or from uh the Best Western Edgewater.
And tho- those are the exceptions if you have shoreline or a resort. I have another question. I'm, I, I'm not a big bar patron, um, but uh, pricing, Chief, do you know, I mean, is, I, I, I look at competition. I don't like monopolies. Um, is, is the pricing for liquor by the drink fair and reasonable in our community? Is it competitive? And I don't know.
That's a fantastic question. I too don't drink.
Yeah.
Though I couldn't tell you what's the cost of a, a drink is.
Does anyone? Ms. Boyd, um, I, I'm just gonna call on you. Is, is the price of a, a mixed drink ex- exorbitantly higher in Sandpoint than it is in? No, but is it, is it, my question, is it, is it higher than it is in, in Porta Lane or in Spokane dramatically? Okay.
Actually, it's probably more expensive here than I think it is.
If she remembers.
I really thought this was so confusing.
Yeah, council members, any other questions for staff or um, uh, before we move on to public comment? I, I, um, as I understand this, a approval would allow you to then um, make us eligible to then entertain uh three additional liquor licenses. Denial would, would mean that we, um, we will never have to face that. So, um, Rick, do you have any questions out there in virtual world?
No, I don't.
Thank you.
Mister Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman Shriver.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm totally confused here. So I get that if we approve this, we get three more liquor licenses.
Well, no, we don't get, we, we have the ability to issue three more, and there's a waiting list that goes back to nineteen seventy-nine with people stacked. When these become available, they can come to us and ask for a new issuance, like in our population group. So this sort of jumps that process and gives us the ability magically to issue up to three more liquor license because we're a resort community.
And so if we, I, I guess I'm struggling to understand why people would challenge that, if you.
Oh, uh, because I believe that existing holders, um, well, there's two things that we heard. First, uh, Senate Bill thirteen eighty, I believe, stripped them of the right, uh, existing holders to sell those or made it more difficult in the future. Um, but this would add additional liquor license holders in town, uh, presumably having effects that we heard, um, heard about tonight. So, um, if you want to, the simple way to think about it, if you want to consider the, and it would be a council vote, uh, an agenda item, if you want to consider uh allowing additional three liquor licenses, you would vote yes on this. If you feel that we have enough liquor licenses and you don't want to um, address that in the future, you would be voting no on that, and we'd stay with the ones that we have right now. The fifteen hundred is, um, once we hit ten thousand population, it's typically by the decennial census, the ten-year census. Um, what I believe I heard is that people opposed to more liquor licenses under this resort umbrella, this exclusion for three more, would, would request a formal census of the city. Um, and then I presume make the case that we are above ten thousand, we're not a resort city, so we're not eligible to issue three additional licenses, which would have other impacts on our ability to leverage local option tax and would potentially lead to an interesting situation about stormwater treatment.
Okay, that's what you were saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Very well said.
That was the part I was confused about, because I was thinking more people meant we would get another liquor license anyway.
It would strip us of our resort. This is, this provision that was passed in thirteen eighty-one, which goes into effect July first, only applies to resort cities.
Got it. Mister Mayor, uh, if there's a waiting list from way back when, um, and let's say we approve this and they come for an approval, is it first come, first served?
It is by that waiting list, um, and they hold that, my understanding is they hold that position until we issue the next one. And it, that person is eligible for.
Um, and my next observation is I don't see a lot of people in here really, possible restaurant.
Reminding.
Just observation.
Yep, that, those are good observations. Any more questions in the council? Um, I believe.
Other questions.
We can, we can clarify for you.
So.
Or I can try.
Yeah, if you don't mind, um, so you can no longer sell or buy a liquor license. What happens when somebody, say, passes away and they hold a liquor license or a business goes out of business?
You can pass it to your first, uh, you can pass it to someone in your family once, and then that liquor license would go away.
Okay. And then it would be available to the next person in the waiting list or just go away completely?
It would go away completely.
So, um, unless you're a waterfront resort, you have a certain amount of frontage. There's a couple other loopholes that you can get. I don't want to call them loopholes, provisions that allow you to get a liquor license.
Right.
And I, again, I, I know enough to be dangerous. One is if you have a certain amount of frontage, uh, resort definition defined as a resort. Um, and maybe a golf course too. Another one is if you've been serving liquor for, what is it, twenty-five?
Seventy-five years continuously.
Continuously?
Mm-hmm.
Um.
You have to show proof of every year that you were.
Get one. So I believe what is, uh, Mister Dick said is they, it would, it would sunset your license. We would then be limited to the number allowed based on our population, and that would go, if we drop below that maximum number, it would go back into the, the auction or that person, that waiting list would come to us and say, I want the license that was just sunsetted.
Right. Okay, yeah, that's what I was asking. This is way more complicated than I expected.
Really?
Yeah, it, it, it does get into the weeds. I think, I think to keep it simple, the question is uh, a vote in support of this would mean we will inevitably get a request for additional liquor licenses, maybe three. Uh, a vote in opposition of this or not supporting this resolution would um mean that we won't have to face that future request.
Mister Mayor, due to the nature of it happening very quickly, this is kind of our, we can't table it for another time.
No, they need a response.
Right.
Um, uh, the state police, because this is a new law, they need to know who's going to be applying for it and put their process in place. I want to say there is a public comment. Did a public comment come in, um, Ms. Ward?
Yes, Mister Mayor.
I do want to make um the opportunity for the public to comment.
Amelia Boyd?
No props.
I'm going to set the record straight. I'm a one-can girl, so it's not like I'm a heavy drink.
This isn't beer and wine. This, just to be clear also, this is not beer and wine. This is.
Yes. Um, so all kidding aside, I think, um, not being a big liquor gal myself, I think it's, it's a two-edged sword. You've got businesses, so now you're denying the opportunity for three possible businesses to enhance their business, right? So that's a big responsibility. And also to Justin's thing about the census, only local officials can request a census. So it's not like the restaurant owners can't go and demand from the federal government, you know, to do a recount of Sandpoint um population. So there is that caveat. So that whole, you know, idea that if you pass this and your resort city status will be stripped of you because of this, no, it's, that's not true. It's only if, you know, our local official requests that, which I don't know if you would or wouldn't do that, um, not to say, but I'm just saying, just so to clear the air so there wasn't any confusion about what could happen if you do pass this ordinance. The reality is, like the mayor is correct, that it's, you have the ability to, just in case, when, um, does it? You have the ability to, just in case when, um, doesn't mean that. If those three people from, that one from nineteen seventy-nine, if that person's still alive and wants, is still interested in it. Comes to you to request their liquor license and you have the ability to say no. So it's not a done deal, it's just giving another business, three businesses, an opportunity to, uh. You know, in a, in a free market to make more money for themselves and their families. And to provide more jobs, you know, bartenders, whatnot, um. For their business, for the community, so there's that piece of it, it's not just. You know. This or this. That's all.
Thanks, Amelia. Um, any other members of the public wish to speak?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, council, um. Uh, I guess, uh, the question is, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution authorizing up to three resorts city. I, I have one more question, chief, um, and I'm ignorant, um. And you can make a motion, and then I guess we could have discussion, but chief, uh, when we do issue liquor licenses in the past. What's the criteria, there's a distance from schools, churches? Is, is there some criteria about where these land?
Yeah, there, there's very limited, but churches, schools. Um, I really don't think there's a. I think those are the two, and I'm, I'm looking at Justin Melissa, because they help him.
Yeah.
But there's, there's very limited, but those are two that I know they're. They're in there.
I don't think our zoning would prohibit it. Many places, I mean, commercial zones, so.
Yeah, I think these type, yeah, yes.
So I, I'm thinking of our mixed-use residential zone. I don't believe that that would prohibit. A bar from opening, so in theory you could. Have a bar pop up on division.
I think that caveat is, uh, they have to sell so much food.
Yeah, it is a fifty, I should also say.
It is not strictly a bar.
Fifty percent of the revenue has to be from food sales, but that's not a perfect.
No.
Uh, ordinance, you could sell a twenty-five thousand dollar hamburger once a month. And, or you could give a free drink with two burgers, um, there's a bunch of ways around that, there's the, the. Despite their efforts, the, the law seems like it's. Not perfected yet. Thanks, chief.
Yeah.
Chief, while you're up here. Can you comment on the crime issue? Would you expect to see more crime if we were to issue three more liquor licenses?
You know, it depends on what type of business you get, if you're looking at like a bar that's open till two in the morning, that's strictly serving liquor, or they're using it as a. Maybe a, a restaurant slash. Bar where they're staying late till two, yeah, I would expect more. Um. Because with that, we know you were a resort city town, we get more. People who are on vacation or tourism and those things, we see more DUIs, more alcohol-related offenses, more intoxication, more. Vandalisms, more disturbing the peace, that all become related to those activities after dark. When you've had too much to drink, um, the meetings with the judges this week, they're even seeing higher BACs, um, on our DUIs. So when you, BAC is the breath. Breath alcohol content, yeah, so. As I, as I whip out the acronyms. Councilman, they can give me a funny look, but. So our, so our, so we're seeing higher numbers of alcohol because of that, now is that strictly? The why behind, I'm not sure. But the more establishments we do open, those are our concerns to have. Especially depending on the unknown of what type of establishment, so it's kinda hard to.
Yeah.
To say, but yeah, late night alcohol usually involves some form of problem.
But just to clarify, these liquor licenses can, can only be for restaurants that, um, have more than six percent of their sixty percent of their income from.
Yeah, but there's not a timeline on how late they could be open, and I can't remember. So they, so you could be a restaurant open till two.
Um, yeah, a restaurant during the day.
Their primary income needs to be from food sales.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep. Um. And I sat in some of the testimony when this was approved, um, this, this session. I did hear, I think the sponsor of the bill say, if people are serving popcorn. And calling themselves a restaurant, he's gonna shut this down, um, I don't know if there's any. Validity in that, but, um, yeah, I think it's, um. A good question for you all to discuss and debate, and hopefully not tie up. Um, so I, I, I'd like to just get a motion in a second, then we can discuss it, and then we can have a roll call vote.
Did you already make a motion, Mr. Mayor?
Is that a, is that appropriate, Zach?
Yes, and if I could just make a request on the motion, I don't know, I have no idea where we're gonna go with this, but if it could be a positive motion, so.
Yeah.
Vote, or make a motion to approve it, so that we're not having to.
Right. Uh, I would entertain a motion to approve the res- the, the resolution authorizing up to three additional resort city liquor, liquor licenses. As provided by New Idaho Code, Section twenty-three, nine oh three C, which would become effective July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Moved.
By Spiro. For second.
Second.
Second by, um, Schreiber. Any discussion, council?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, so we have, uh, two options, either just straight up deny it, goes away, um, we've heard testimony from. Um, the public that, you know, free market, we have an opportunity to allow. Three businesses to further economically. Um. Also, I'm, haven't had one person talk to me about, like, nobody's here. So if it was that big of a deal to me, I, we, I think we'd see more people here, that's just my inclination, my opinion. Um. So it's really. You know, we don't have, if we approve it, we don't, we can still withhold allowing it, but that doesn't mean the next council. Um. You know, it could create more problems down the road, but the question is. Uh, wha- what is the right thing to do here, and not sure, uh, it's, it's, it's super clear.
Council discussion.
Yeah, I guess I still have two questions, one is, we absolutely could not. Apply for this in the future ever.
You know, that's a question, I'm afraid I don't have clarity, if we were not to pass this this year. What would happen next year if we got a bunch of response, uh, I, I'm afraid I do not have that answer. Uh, I would presume it's not a, looking at the, looking at the code and looking at the letter. It does not say this is your only opportunity forever and ever to, um. Consider this, I believe it just says this year, let me just go back to the.
Yeah, but.
State police.
We also know how government is, they'll say, oh, well, the spirit of the law meant, yeah. Um, next question I guess I have, as Mr. Mayor looks that up, is. Let's say, are, are we protected, Zach, legally, let's say we, do we have to have a reason to deny a request? That was my. One would argue arbitrary, like, and then. Take us to court, there we go, you know, we just don't feel like we're ready for that as a community. And they go, cool, see you in court for arbitrarily denying my application.
My reading of this statute demonstrates that, that the city council has a lot of discretion here. And it's your job to make a decision on what is the best interest of the city. And so I think that, that. You have a lot of discussion.
Follow-up question to that. Do, would we have to approve them in the order they're on the waiting list? So we couldn't approve numbers two and three without approving number one?
Y- y- you have to approve them on the orders that they're on the, on the.
So if number one is an awful idea that would be terrible for the town, we could never have another one?
Well, let me see, I mean, the code isn't, doesn't really answer that question.
Yeah, and the letter does not state that other, either, from the state police, alcohol beverage control.
It says priority, here's what I can tell you, priority shall be given on a first come, first served basis, so. Um. I don't know the answer specifically to your question, it's a good question, if you were to deny one, would you be able to? Would the second person on the waiting list then be able to, to apply, and you could approve that one? I don't know the answer to that, all I can tell you is that the code says priority shall be given on a first come, first served basis.
So first come, first served doesn't mean.
Yeah, first, first, doesn't mean approval.
Who's had.
That's, so that's my, I think that's my knee-jerk reaction as well, is you could deny one, and then the next person comes up and, and you could approve that one, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, what if their character was questioned, or they had a history of doing, running shoddy. Disrupted businesses, I mean, I think.
Then again, on the other hand, if, if somebody new comes into town and wants to start a restaurant and. Wants a liquor license.
On the long waiting list.
Yep.
But it's priority to get a hearing, not priority to get approval.
Correct.
And you could say, well, we're not approving that one next, not approving that one next, actually, that's a good idea, we'll approve that one next.
You know, the ABC letter, now that I read it, says, your response to this letter is kindly requested on or before June fifteenth. It doesn't say you are gonna lose your statutory right to do this if you don't respond by June sixty, fifteenth. So.
I, I would be surprised if there's a hard deadline.
Right.
So we can table it?
Table it or vote on it, if you hear an uproar, we could, um, if you were to deny it or not pass it. Uh, if this motion were to fail, you, you could probably reconsider it, I'm guessing, um. Uh.
I would be willing to table it myself.
Yeah, like. Like a motion?
Well, this motion on the table.
Oh, it's true, yeah.
Table it. Uh, which.
But even if we denied it, it could be brought back up again.
In my, you know. Lady person's opinion, it, it, I don't see anything in this letter saying we can't. Bring it back up in the future.
Is. A motion to approve it that gets voted down essentially tabling it anyway?
No.
That's denying.
It's denying it. They would have to be come forward in the future, is, a table would actually set it aside until someone reintroduced it. That's my understanding.
Mr. Mayor, I think if, if, uh, the, the person who made the motion wanted to rescind their motion. They could do so, you could rescind the second, and then you could start over.
Which is you, Mr. Mayor.
Who rescinded?
I mean, no, no, the motion was made by Counselor Spurrow.
Second by Schreiber.
Was it?
Yeah.
Um, I rescind my motion, I rescind my second.
So can I make a motion to table this?
Yeah, um, Melissa, can you, or Zach, can you, uh, educate us, uh, my understanding is tabling something can be actually. Quite strategic. That potentially can lock it away into purgatory unless it is brought back on.
There's a difference between postponing and tabling.
Oh.
Um, and what you're looking to do, I think, is postpone it until the next meeting, I'm making an assumption.
Well, I don't. It'd be nice to get some public input, but.
But postpone it to next meeting, and if we get the answers we desire, then we move forward, and if not, we just reject it.
Okay, so maybe we get letters because of this discussion, and we would have a clue whether.
Well, we'll give those people who really are craving to have this an opportunity to be at the next meeting. Since they forgot about it tonight.
Cause I do agree about rights for. You know. Doing what you want with your restaurant and staffing, and I understand what you are saying, but. If it messes our resort.
I'm not so concerned about the resort city status, um. For me, uh, I think it's more of a question of. Is there a competitive marketplace for drinks right now, it sounds like there is. Um, people aren't being gouged, you can get a drink at Connie's and other places, Mitzi, for a fair price.
Two nineteen gives you a better one.
Um, A and P, um, and I'm, I'm, I'm hearing that, um. You know, uh, the proliferation, proliferation of alcohol, hard alcohol establishments, uh. May and likely does contribute to additional, um. Crime and issues with DWIs, uh, by the very nature of more is gonna be more. Um. And, and I, I understand the public testimony from, uh, Mr. Dick that, um, there have been. Great sacrifices and expectation-based. Investments made in licenses that, um. Are eroded and impacted by, um, additional licenses provided in the community, so.
I'm sorry, Pam, Mr. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to. Deny this resolution.
Motion to deny the resolution.
Is that what you asked us not to do?
Well, just so you know, that if you, if we do it through this way, a motion to deny, yes means no, and no means yes when you're voting.
Yeah, correct, correct.
The only reason I asked for that.
Share that again?
So it's clean, so if, if the motion is to deny the resolution, yes means no, and no means yes.
Please be saying, yes, I wanna deny this.
Correct, it's just, it's a double negative.
And if you have a lot of people that wanted to have this, just send it my way, I'll talk to them.
Uh, there's a, a motion to deny the resolution, is there a second?
A second for the sake of discussion.
Second by Councilman Schreiber, uh, discussion.
Can, could we bring this back if we did have people come to us after denying it, or is this? The last chance that we would have?
I don't believe there's great clarity, um, anywhere in the statute or in the letter from alcohol beverage control. Um, I would point out in this letter, um. Your email response to this letter is kindly requested on or before June fifteenth, nowhere in this letter does it say, if you don't.
Right.
Reply with a resolution by, you will lose your, forfeit your opportunity to ever do this again. Um, nowhere in the statute does it talk about that, so, uh, I have to infer that a denial tonight does not. Uh, exclude us from taking this up in the future.
Okay.
Hey, I would also say that in this, it says to expedite and simplify the offer, these licenses to restaurants in your town, we first need to complete a list of sources, I think essentially. By meeting this deadline, it would get rid of some administrative red tape.
Yeah, they're probably expecting a lot. And that's why we have a lawyer to argue our case if we wanna bring it back.
Yeah. I would just point out as an aside, I, I think the legislation that last sentence, the signed form must also include documentation showing that sewage flows and excess. Flows exceed low season flows by twenty percent, um, that's how they're defining a resort city under this in part. Um, with our INI and flow and infiltration, I'm not sure, I, I think our highest flows are probably during our. Quietest periods of the year, um, I know they are in fact, so, uh, I think that's, that could be challenging in the future too, but. I don't wanna. Pull on Pandora's box, so there's a motion and a second to deny this resolution, any further discussion? This'll be a roll call vote.
Counselor Spurrow?
Yes.
Counselor Highworth?
Yes.
Counselor Dick, oh, sorry, abstain, Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes, and the resolution was not passed.
So. Thank you. Item seventeen, letty, letter to the Army Corps of Engineer regarding Lake Letter, before we convene an executive session, which we're gonna do after this. Uh, Counselor Dick, and, uh, he's, oh, I also also say that Director Welker was at this meeting. Uh, requested an agenda item to discuss the drafting of the letter, the Army Corps of Engineer on the economic impact of Lake Ponderay. At less than full pool, um, I'm going to yield the, uh, Florida Counselor Dick. I'll just point out, there was a meeting, I was unable to attend it, um, held by the Army Corps last Thursday, I believe, Councilman. Dick was there, Director Welker was there, um, I'd really appreciate, uh, your summary of that meeting, either one or both of you, hopefully it's. Not conflicting, uh, observations, but, um, I have not yet had a. Uh, he- here's what I've learned, uh, council members, um, there's a problem with, uh, deficiency defect in, in, in the. Controlability of the dam, we probably all know about that, these gates that are delaminating. Uh, a very long time period to potentially address and identify which other gates. Are deficient, um, limited ability to operate due to flood risk and catastrophic failure, the lake level. Um, a modified operational plan that allows flows to be controlled to some degree. No clear path on how they're gonna figure this out. And concurrently. I'm hearing from the, uh, Mr. Ellisesser and folks who represent, um, Lake Ponderay folks, that there is. Concurrent discussion about. Lake level operations, um, if you're not aware, uh, there is some originating language. That, um, stipulated that lake levels be maintained for recreation, um, uh, for the benefit of our community. Um, and clearly, um. Um, adjusting the lake levels and impacting their flows, um, would have an impact on our taxpayers, our property values, our businesses, so. With that, that's, that's what's in my brain, um, please, uh, expand that.
I think you hit the nail on the head, um, just to summarize where we're at, we have ten gates, we have one backup gate. The one backup gate, gate eleven, is now where gate three is, gate three is what was pulled out. Gate three, uh, was given by the Army Corps of Engineers to a contractor who's had it for ten months. They had to strip the lead paint off of gate three. And when they did, they found the delaminations on the back of gate three, and then they assume that all eleven gates. Have the same delaminations, and they do not want to move the gates, uh, very, they don't wanna move them, uh, they want to move them minimally. Uh, due to risk of the crane operator, if the gate were to break, uh, as well as for the dam to be open. Um, I originally, uh, wrote this or got this on the agenda prior to going to the meeting. And wanted to discuss having a letter to the Army Corps of Engineers, I think what. I since learned from the meeting, um, the Army Corps. I think their responsibility with this is their transparency with how often they're doing maintenance. Apparently they do sonar, uh, on each of those gates, but that lead gate, the lead paint blocked. Finding the delaminations, uh, what really concerned me about the Army Corps of Engineer. Uh, what really concerned me about the Army Corps of Engineers was those gates have a uh, useful life of fifty years. They are all at sixty-nine years old, including the crane that operates the gates. Um, I'd also like to bring up, I think, one of the other things that falls on the Army Corps shoulders is the amount of time that the gate was with the contractor. Um, and we did not get any discussion on how often they checked in with the contractor, how often the contractor checked in with the Army Corps of Engineers. One thing that was uh, apparent, I believe, through the meeting was there is only so much money that the Army Corps gets from the feds uh, to replace, to get another gate. There are no other gates in this area, right? Every dam is built slightly different, so every gate, so we, there's not a spare that we can borrow from another community. Um, I think where we actually need to look at drafting something as a community is talk about, you know, the lake is our economy, right? Um, is to get something off to Bonneville Power and Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, there are some cases, many cases, uh, potentially of Bonneville Power fitting the bill or giving money over to the Army Corps of Engineers to help with issues like this. And I think that's kind of where the discussion uh, should go. Uh, I don't know if we run this up, the feds are going and yelling at the Army Corps. Uh, it's going to change anything other than maybe to get some assurances that their uh, maintenance program uh, is much more than annual and potentially quarterly. How they are dealing with their contractors, who those contractors are, what the assurances the contractors have to the Army Corps of Engineers and to the communities to which um, are going to be impacted if there are an issue.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Dick. I I just want to add on to this. I think it's a um, a much more serious issue actually than even described. And the duration of it may be much longer than anyone and the impact of it uh, much more severe than anyone understands. Council, I mean, Director Welker, could you uh, brief us briefly on the snow levels, the conversation we had today? How they're operating today when we had a very low snow year and the fact that they're they're basically draining the lake to prepare for a potential rain on snow or quick melt. And they'll have to keep it drained until this is fixed. If we had a big snow year, they would actually have to drain it and keep it lower for longer to basically prepare for a potential big runoff. Can you summarize that a little bit?
Yeah, so just to give kind of a uh, an example, a case study, if we had been at full pool by Labor Day like we some often are. And we had had a two and a half inch rain event like we did over the last two days. What they can't do right now is modulate the lake level by raising multiple gates, you know, ten percent each or something and and allowing that regular flow. By the way, this is the first time in the history of the dam that they've had nine gates completely closed and one gate completely open. That is not how they operate this dam. But it's been like that for a month now and they haven't moved any of the gates at all. And the reason is if you partially open one, they're afraid of a increased chance of catastrophic failure of a gate from having that. It's the it's the flow of the water underneath the gate that could result in catastrophic failure. So if if we had been at full pool on Labor Day and then we'd had that two inch rain event, they weren't able to open the gates where they aren't allowed to open the gates, we would have seen massive flooding all over the Ponderay Basin like over the last two days. Because we still have a deep snowpack all over the Ponderay Basin, eighty percent of which is Montana. So we look at Schweitzer and like, oh, there's hardly any snow, but most of the snow feeding Lake Ponderay comes from Wellup River as far as Missoula and beyond, the Bitterroot River and so on. So deep snowpack this year, um, for that reason, they're keeping the lake. It's still, we're still four and a half feet below summer pool. They feel that that's a safe level for when we do get additional rain on snow events and that snowpack continues to draw down. When we see those those heavy flows coming down river, sometimes as high as a hundred thousand cubic feet per second. Um, they can just let that dump through the the spill gate. So that the the powerhouse, which is operated by Bonneville, can only accommodate thirty thousand CFS. Um, if if we were to have all gates closed and then we had an eighty thousand CFS event, that lake fills up by fifty thousand cubic feet per second. We see massive flooding. So that's why they're keeping the lake low until the risk of flooding is as is basically zero and then they'll fill it up really quickly. They'll put that last gate down. It'll be all the way down. All ten gates will be down. And now there's almost zero chance of seeing more than thirty thousand cubic feet per second, so this the powerhouse can manage the summer flows all summer when we don't see rain and there's no more snow to melt. Now, I asked a question, cause I went out to the dam a couple of weeks ago. I sent you guys an email immediately after that visit summarizing most of this. My question was, we only had like sixty-seven percent of our average snowpack this year. Um, what happens when we have a hundred percent of average snowpack, where we have a La Niña winter and we get a hundred and twenty percent?
Which, by the way, if you look at the long range prediction, I'm a huge fan of that. Next year is a La Niña year.
Yeah, and I don't really want to like freak people out, but the answer is basically the the more snow we have in the mountains, the longer we have to keep the lake at low winter pool levels. Because that risk of flooding is extended further into the summer. Now, this has been a weird year actually, cause we have more snow in the mountains right now than we normally do in June, because it's been a very cold and very wet spring. Um, in fact, they're still getting snow all over the Montana Mountains right now. I saw that uh, the Passon Glacier National Park has the deepest snowpack in over twenty years for this time of year, which is crazy, cause in the middle of winter, they had seventy percent of their average snowpack. So it might, that might not be the case because we've had a very cold and wet spring this year. So if we had a, there's a lot of variables, but.
I guess my my.
Justin, you you did a great summary otherwise. I mean, it's the the takeaway I had was that there's no short term fix. This could be, you know, let's assume best case scenario, they are able to repair one gate a year. We're ten years out from being back to normal operations.
Yeah, and that's just what I wanted to emphasize is this is not, uh, you know, uh, a question of two weeks. Is it low for two weeks this year? I think this is a broader potential serious concern for many years in the near future. So um, this isn't an action item. Um, uh, barring any objection from the council, I here's the thing, I subscribe to a belief that you don't want to be, you know, Chicken Little and you want to use your voice limited. And uh, when you speak, you want people to listen. So I haven't been writing the the governor or anyone else. Um, cause when we speak, I want it to be voice, um, barring any um, uh, objection from the council, I can certainly put together a letter uh, with help from Zach and staff and other great minds. Um, and bring that forward for you for um, sending off an approval. Um, anyone object to that? And I believe that probably go to Bonneville, probably the Army Corps, probably to the governor, to our senators, our congress folks and um, just copy them all.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Counsel.
I I definitely don't object to that first off, but I did want to add a couple of things. I was at that meeting too. Yeah, so one of the things that was said at that meeting was that ninety-eight percent of the funding for dam repairs comes from Bonneville Power, so I that seems like they're the people to talk to, for sure. Um, another thing that struck me at that meeting is that there's several dams above us in this watershed. And why can't they coordinate with those dams to uh, reserve some capacity above us in case of that catastrophic event? Well, they, those dams shut their gates and send less down to us. Uh, so I started looking into what who, what are those dams, one of which is acronym Y K Q or Y Q K, something like that. It's a indigenous word that they shortened to the acronym because nobody can pronounce it. Except for the indigenous people. Um, that dam has been below pool for at least one year, all of last year. And the property owners and local communities lobbied their elected officials. And there is now a bill in the US House Natural Resources Committee called Fill the Lake, or maybe it's Fill the Dam Bill. It was brought by a legislator in Montana specifically to um, advocate for scenarios like ours where the Army Corps isn't um, providing a full pool. Unfortunately, that means that if they fill theirs, if they succeed in filling theirs, it's above us. The watershed, that means there won't be any extra capacity to to give us cushion, but um, it could uh, create the urgency that we need to get this problem fixed. Another thing that that occurred to me in this meeting was there's probably more than just those gates. Uh, they said all the gates were made from the same steel at the same manufacturer at the same time, so they're probably all in need of replacement. Well, what else came from that manufacturer? Probably all of the steel at that dam. So what other critical components are gonna fail next? And so I think we do need um, some urgency in looking at the entire dam, not just, oh, we'll replace one this year and then well, next year we can do two because we'll have two good ones, right? And it it can compound as we build more, but no, I think we need to have a complete look at what everything in this dam, like, like you said, it's twenty years overdue for replacement, so what else needs to be replaced here?
Yeah.
It's not, I don't think it's something that we can just say, oh, well, we'll just, you know, deal with low lake levels for a decade until they get around to fixing it. I think there definitely needs to be some urgency and our neighbors in Montana have been very successful at creating that urgency.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilman Trevor. That those are great points and um, yeah, I'd like I'd like to make a very strong statement, including some good economic analysis and um, uh, assertions about worst case and best case scenarios. And and yeah, certainly, I'm uh, agreeable to try to push it as far up as we have to, so. Uh, with that, barring any objection, um, we'll get cracking on a uh, response and uh, maybe even call a quick special council meeting so you can approve that one thing if we if we need to get it out as quick as soon as possible. Thanks, uh, Councilman Dick for uh, summarizing that and Jason and Councilman Schreiber. Oh, uh, any members of the public wish to speak on this item? I'm sorry. Okay, um, the final item on the agenda this evening is an executive session. I entertain a motion to convene an executive session suit into Idaho Code, Section seventy-four two oh six one C, to acquire interest in real property not owned by a public agency. Moved by Schreiber, second by um, uh, Spiro, thank you. Uh, this will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Howarth?
Yes.
Counselor Spurrow?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor motion passes.
Thank you, and I think we'll stay here. It's feel free. Thank you, public. Enjoying our meeting tonight.
Mr. Mayor.